Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board for Monday, June 10, 2024. Hello. Also available via Zoom for those not in the building to participate. We'll start the -- excuse me. We'll start with the call the meeting to order with a roll call. Mike Baptiste.
Here.
Jane Gleason.
Here.
Sam Corbett. Carl Schultz.
Here.
And Chair Michael King is here. One bit of preliminary business and then we'll jump. Preliminary business, the meeting minutes of May 20, 2024. As the board had a chance to review and verify.
Motion accept.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion to accept by Sam Corbett, seconded by Jane Gleason. All in favor. Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And even though I read them, I wasn't here, so I'm going to abstain.
You don't have to.
I know I don't have to, but I'm going to play it on the safe side. I know we have an agenda lined up. It is my prerogative to change it around a little bit. And we're going to jump a couple spots and go to continue public hearings. Item number three, Grace Lighthouse Fellowship, Project 4-24, if they're here.
Can you turn it up? Is there any way you can hear it?
Can you turn the speaker volume up at all? I'll try to speak a little louder. So we're going to jump to 4-24 Grace Lighthouse Fellowship, if there's someone here to speak to that.
I guess they're sticking me with this.
Wow, that's not good. We may have, because they think they're further down the agenda, they may have planned to come here a little later. And I keep trying to do a good deed, maybe I'm not.
Do you want us to wait? Do you think someone else is coming?
Do you believe they are coming? Do you want to state that for the record?
The pastor is on his way.
Okay, what about the engineering team?
That I don't know.
Do we have anybody online?
No one's raised their hand.
Okay. I think what we'll do, I'm going to rescind my good-natured offer. And we'll put them back to where they were in the agenda and give them time to get here. I think maybe they figured they had a little bit of time.
Yeah, pastor's expecting to be here about 6:30.
Okay, all right. So we'll wait and we'll bring them up in order. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, preliminary business, 7-20 Borrego Solar Systems, 27 Charge Pond Road. And as we have made habit in the past, since they are both identical projects, we're going to hear 9-20 Borrego Solar Systems, 150 to Haunted Road at the same time.
Good evening. Greg Sampson, I'm here, Sullivan and Worcester, on behalf of New Leaf Energy.
Excuse me, could you speak clearly, spell your name? We have a new.
Sure.
Oh, that's right.
Recording recorder.
Yep.
So spell clearly so she can get it.
Yep, Gregory Sampson, S-A-M-P-S-O-N, G-R-E-G-O-R-Y, Sullivan and Worcester, LLP, on behalf of New Leaf Energy, formerly Borrego.
Good evening, David Fixler, F-I-X-L-E-R, from the law firm of Greenberg Charreg, on behalf of 27 CPR Wareham Solar One.
So we appreciate the board's time. I know we've had a couple of occasions. I want, I'm going to allow David to introduce himself a little bit. He's been on some of the Zoom calls. But I think we had introduced his client's involvement a little while back, but they've obviously taken a more active role in the past few months. So do you want to do that first?
Yeah, I think I've been on Zoom for, there have been two meetings, including the one on April 8, where the question was, you know, who is this DSD? How did they get here? And so DSD actually bought the projects from Borrego, New Leaf. And DSD would be the entity that's going to be constructing and operating the 27 Charge Pond Road project. And the deal that they had was that New Leaf would continue to be out in the lead in the permitting. But as we're getting closer, DSD wanted me to get more involved. So that's why I'm here. And I've had various communications with town council as well on this.
And that applies to the 27 Charge Pond. So there is a little bit of a difference. New Leaf still is the owner of the 150 to Haunted. But I think we first wanted to just mention a relatively significant update on the projects. As you know, we've been waiting a long time for the Eversource process to roll out. And we finally just received the SIP approval, the capital improvement plan that Eversource had to prepare that identifies the work that Eversource needs to do to upgrade all the substations. So that is now finalized. All of the projects in Wareham that were held up in the group study that was pending the SIP approval and pending the DPU are now going to move into getting interconnection agreements finalized and signed. And then the project scheduling can actually start to move forward a bit. So we think that's a very positive thing. We're happy to talk a little bit about where we are with the project. One thing that has come up is, I know we've been talking about these for a while. We'll finally have a little more insight and guidance into the overall schedule within the next couple of months. If the board was so inclined to actually wait on any decision on the actual extensions, we probably will know more later this summer when we can actually sit down and say, this is what the project process looks like, this is when construction will take place, and talk then about any changes to the project, if that's relevant. So that is an option. We wanted to, we think there is some value in actually making a decision on the extension timing when we actually know when the projects are likely to be built. We're very comfortable with that. There's also some legislative changes that may play into it as far as how the projects are going to move through the interconnection process. There's pending regulatory changes that could, pending statutory changes that could affect the overall timeline in the queue for the interconnections as well as how projects are approved. So those are all factors that we just wanted to mention. We do think there's possibly some validity to waiting on these decisions to see how that plays out. But we just wanted to start with that, with the board.
Do you want me to talk about the legislative extension?
Charlie, have a minute?
I have some questions, but.
They're probably mimicking mine, that's why I'm offering you first.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a couple of questions. First, as we've been working together, there are, I acknowledge the benefits for waiting for more information because that would be consistent with what we've been doing. I do have a question, at least one, I always have one. If we were to wait, delay, continue our discussions, and legislative action did occur, I know that there are all kinds of things swirling around about what that legislative action might be. Certainly, the preponderance of that is that it will be favorable to solar developers, less favorable to towns who want to regulate projects. So given that assumption for the moment, if I can make that assumption, if there was legislative action and we did continue our discussion, how would that legislative action impact a lot of the agreements and hard work that we've done? We haven't reached agreement on everything, but we've made a lot of progress. If legislative action came down and basically said we needed to take favorable action on the extension, how would that impact all the agreements we've made?
Good question. I mean, as far as the decommissioning bonds.
That would be a big one.
I don't think we're looking to revisit that. I think the reality was your decommission, your conditions of approval.
Already allowed us.
Contemplated a modification to the decommissioning. So we wouldn't look to undo those agreements.
Okay. The other things that we were working on, which, you know, there's a lot of concern about the impact of battery storage systems over the aquifer. And we've been trying to find a way to work through that. We haven't, we haven't come to closure on that. I do know that we had proposed some conditions and that you came back and didn't accept all those conditions. So how would legislative action impact that working together process? I'm trying to figure out the risk of giving you an extension and then being preempted.
Can I? Well, so let me, let's circle back. I mean, one, we have, our position is that the extension under the applicable statute, the extension is automatic if there's good cause. And we don't want to be going back and forth on that tonight. That's a legal issue. But that's our position, is that there has been good cause. They've been stuck in the interconnection queue forever. These projects and all the projects in the Plymouth Group, of which I was the counsel for the Plymouth Group at the DPU to try and get Eversource to get going on all this stuff. And it's been, it's been a slog, but we got a great order last week. They would have liked nothing better than to be out of the queue years ago. So through no fault of their own, they're stuck in the queue. Under the applicable statute, 48, Section 9, if they, if construction or use hasn't happened within the time period in the permit, it's automatically extended for good cause. That being aside, the legislative action that is also out there, there are, it's churning in the legislature. There are two avenues of automatic extensions. One is for this particular situation, for all the projects that are in the interconnection queue, the projects, if they were alive between October of 2020 and January 1, 2024, they're extended, they would be extended for a period sufficient to get the interconnection going.
That's period sufficient, which is indeterminate.
Well, no, see, that plays into, that plays into exactly what Greg was saying earlier. Now that the SIP has been approved, we will be able to know, not today, but we will be able to know later and in the not-too-distant future, whether we'll put more, you know, more parameters around when that interconnection could happen. So that would be, that would be a good thing. But the point is, is that if we wait another six weeks by the end of July, we'll have a much better picture as to what's going to happen with the legislation. Because if it's July 31 and nothing happens, it's not impossible. But it's much harder for legislation to get there. Then there's another legislative bill that the governor, in the Governor's Economic Bill, that extends the expiration date of any state and local permit that was in existence between January 2023 and January 2025 for two years. So that's out there, too.
Just a favor.
Sure.
If you actually know, could you cite those references so we can have them in the record? Do you know the references, the bills or the?
So the first one about the interconnection, that was proposed by the Governor's Commission on Clean Energy Siting and Clean Energy Infrastructure Siting. And that was favorably reported on by the commission. It is now actually, there's no document because they're now, the executive branch and the legislature are meeting to decide how to put that in proposed legislation. So that's up in the air. The other one.
Okay, so that isn't a bill yet.
It is, it is not a bill, it's going to be in a bill.
No, no, I'm just trying to, so we can't reference a bill yet.
No, but I could certainly, we can point you and we can get you whatever paperwork that you need. But it's not in a bill as.
But there was a favorable report, which we should cite for the record. Did you submit that for the, for our, can you just submit that so we can have a copy? Thank you.
And then the second one is actually in a proposed bill, the Economic Development Bill, which I believe was reported out of the House.
Last week.
Last week. So again, but.
It's the Mass Leads Act.
Yeah, it's the Mass Leads.
Do you have a number?
I do not, but I'm.
Send, just send it. We're trying to keep track because there's a whole lot of moving parts.
Right, and there's a lot of other things that are related, that are not related to this issue that are out there. So, but then it's, you know, it's, we've all been around, the legislature, you know, starts in July. There's a lot of going on in July. So, but at the end of, at the end of July, we'll have a much better picture as to what that happens. Because if that happens, those, no matter what you do tonight, if you, if you don't agree with us that it's been automatically extended and you have a vote tonight, and whenever you vote, that subsequent legislation is going to override whatever decision you make on.
It will be, it will be retroactive. That's unusual, isn't it?
It's, so we had a Permit Extension Act that was passed in 2010, and then it was amended in 2012, and it did the same thing. And that was, that was an outcome of the 2008. But it's almost the identical legislation, so it would reinstate expired permits.
Then when you get, just send that citing as well.
And there's a.
Just so we have.
Absolutely. And there is a Q and A document that Commonwealth put out at the time that explains the process. I can include that as well.
So you're citing that as an example that would not apply. You're just saying you anticipate the new legislation would mirror that kind of language or that effect.
I expect it will, yes.
Yes, okay.
What we've seen so far in the Governor's Bill does mirror that language.
Okay. So you're saying if they do pass it, no matter what we rule on tonight, it would get overturned? That's your anticipation? You can't know that, but that, is that what I'm hearing you say?
With respect to an extension.
An extension, yes.
Right, you had talked about all the before.
No, no, I understand. So I'm trying to understand how both things work together.
Right, exactly. And so where I come out is, you know, and I live in the town of Sharon. I'm on my, I was on my town's finance committee, I've been in your situation. And sometimes things are a little clearer when you wait a little bit more. And I just think until we have better sight as to what's going to happen with these legislative bills, plus with the SIP just being approved, we'll all be in a much better position to deal with this stuff.
Okay. And I appreciate, I was just worried about if we didn't act, would we lose the benefit of all the hard work that we've put in?
No.
So far.
No, and I, you know, I can speak for New Leaf's project. I think we're comfortable with where we've been and the conversations and the agreements, the change in the pollinator species, all the information we've provided to the board over the past couple of years. I mean, we, none of that is coming off the table just because of legislative action. So that affects how the project's going to be built, and those are already incorporated into what the project will be.
So if we, if we do wait, one of the open items is your inability, I don't take that, I'm not trying to be pejorative. The fact that you can't nail down exactly what the battery configuration's going to be, that was an area we were going, would, if we did wait six or eight weeks, would that be clearer at that time? And then perhaps we could have Milos?
It probably wouldn't be perfectly known at that point, again, because it will depend a little bit on, you know, for instance, I was before Rochester last week, and one of the projects that was stuck in a similar study, their SIP was approved and Eversource is now permitting the substation upgrades. So it is happening relatively quickly. If we don't have like a real commitment from Eversource, then we could possibly have to, you know, still, we still might not know the answers to that question. If they, if they advance this to the point where we're going to have very good visibility into when construction's going to start, that's documentation I think we would like to front-load and start to actually produce that because we don't want to be in a position where that, we're getting real close to construction and those things are unknown and end up being a problem.
Right, that area of uncertainty is what we were trying to navigate through so that we could sort of come to some area of comfort around the impact of the battery systems.
Correct.
Okay.
If I could, what's the risk of the legislature going on summer break prior to all of this taking place?
The risk of the legislature actually not, I think heads would roll if they did that. The risk is that they don't, that it doesn't, that it doesn't happen by July 31.
Well, that was my point, was now the request for six weeks becomes 10 weeks or 12 weeks.
They close the session on July 31, and they, sometimes they'll go to like August 1. But if it doesn't happen then, then it's, there's no reliable pathway for it to move forward after that.
Right, I mean, technically, technically, they could still go and pass it. But for that to happen, no legislature can oppose it. It's a lot, because it wouldn't be in a formal session. So for all intents and purposes, for our discussion here on this, we'll know by August 1 whether these things are in the bill or whether the bill, the bill got passed, we'll know that.
Or whether the bill didn't get acted on.
Or whether the bill didn't get acted on. But this is, I mean, it's not like this is a single bill, this is part of a much larger bill. So there would be other repercussions if the bill didn't get acted on.
Wouldn't be the first time, though.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right, that is true.
Mr. Chairman, one of the questions you asked is how, you know, the interconnection process and, you know, one of the requirements of the commission's language on the process is that any, for these projects to benefit from an extension, they have to be, they have to continue to be active. If they don't take the next step with the interconnection agreement or register for the smart when they're eligible or pursue their interconnection application, they would lose the benefit of the extension. So it really is intended for only the projects that are committed to move forward to receive the benefit of that.
And they have to, they have to make significant payments to Eversource for the upgrades. Eversource wants, you know, a good portion of that upfront. So that's, that's a big indication.
Be all done here?
They basically, I have to think about what they said, but they answered my question, which is, I think, they've, and if we were going to continue the discussion, I would want to go on record just to say they're going to honor the things we've worked for so far, so that.
Well, that was.
That would be, that would be critical to my, but attorney Sampson said that, and he's been.
They don't have to.
Huh?
They wouldn't have to.
They don't have to at any point. So that's a risk, we have to decide.
The other question that I had is, on the conditions, one of the things that we requested in the, in the extension was that you come back before us for a final review. I mean, because the project's long in the tooth. I mean, it's already, what, four and a half years old? So by the time the rest of it plays out and you are ready to get your agreement, everything is good. You know, the thing's probably going to be five years old. And we requested that you come back before us for a final review only because over the past few years, I mean, the board and especially Carl has become just crazily educated on solar, on battery storage, crazy. Well, that's why I used it, because it was you. And a lot of things change, and they change quick. Technology changes and, you know, we run the risk of approving an outdated project. So we did ask you for that courtesy to come back before us, and you were hesitant to do that. You wanted to get your final approvals from the building inspector and from the fire chief. Fire chief, no disrespect to him, I mean, he is very well-educated in battery storage, but his expertise is how to put it out once it catches fire, not, you know, looking at ways to prevent the catastrophic event from happening. And the building inspector isn't educated on battery storage at all. So, you know, that for me would be a sticking point that I would want the board to have a final look at the project prior to the first tree bit coming down or the first shovel going in the ground.
And the other thing, we, the board maybe, I was thinking, how do we, how do we define the project that's going to get, would get extended, either preemptively or by action by us, such that we know that it's changed and then when you be triggered to come back for a modification? So it's different. To Mike's point, five years ago, you guys designed a project. It got, it got a special permit, it got site plan. It's not, it's not unreasonable to suspect that what you're going to build would be different than what you envisioned. And the problem is, we haven't been able to quantify the baseline so that we would know what changed, so that we could, that's all we're trying to get back is, is if it's changing, we want to know.
And I mean, I think our response has been that really hasn't been any material changes and we don't anticipate any. And I know that you would like more documentation to be evident of that, which we're happy to provide.
And that's what you said, we'll know once we get to the point of going for building permits.
Clear, yes.
That's why we're just trying to say, if we could look at it at that point and then you could sit down and say, yes, this is what we proposed when you approved it, it's not different. That's all we're trying to get to.
So, so I appreciate that. And I guess we, we sent back in like the middle of April, the conditions were submitted by.
And you marked it up, I've read that multiple times, Mr. King is right there.
We accepted, we agreed to, we agreed to almost every, except for the planning board. And that, I mean, first of all, again, I just have to say this, this isn't, you know, I'm a lawyer, so I have to say legally, we think we already have the extension under the statute. I don't want to argue that now because that's not for us.
This group wouldn't decide that.
But we think we have it legally. So our position is, we don't, we didn't have to offer any of the conditions. But your point, what you're saying is well-taken. And my client always wants to work in municipalities. The last thing they want to do is get into an argument with municipality.
These guys have been great.
Yep. And, and so when we saw that, we sent it back in the middle of April. We haven't gotten any language, we haven't gotten any language back. I mean, what you just said is different than what's in the condition. Those are pretty broad conditions. The planning board can come in and just say, say no to the battery at all. So we would be happy to have some more narrowly tailored language that we could look at and talk to. We sent it, you know, like I said, I think it's like April 18 or 19.
But we haven't, we haven't gotten back together.
Understood. No, that's not a knock, I'm just saying that there might be, you know, we didn't agree to that, but there might be something else that we could, we could agree to. But not, that was just really broad, and it isn't what you just, isn't what you just said, so.
Again, my concern is, is you're looking for final approval on a project from entities that don't have the sophisticated knowledge. You know, that's the long and the short of it. You want to go to the guy that approves an addition for an extra bathroom to give you the go-ahead to build a very large solar array with battery storage? And my personal opinion is, is not appropriate. And that's why we asked for that language in the beginning, to make sure that that didn't happen, that it came back. We got an opportunity to look at the project, make sure that nothing substantially changed, and then move forward. But you have a problem with that.
Oh, I'm not sure we have a problem with that. I mean, we, the conditions are full of all kinds of requirements.
That's, I'm not talking to any of the other conditions, I'm talking to this.
Yeah, I'm talking about the battery, I'm talking about that document, that's all about the battery.
I'm not talking about the document as a whole, I'm talking about the specific ask that you come back before the planning board, before construction begins for one final review. And your answer to that was no.
Our answer to that was the language that was in there was too broad. Again, I'd be, we'd be happy to talk about more now. I understand exactly what you're saying.
Bless you.
And I can certainly talk to my, bless you. I could certainly talk to my client about that. But that, we never, we didn't get any response back to that. And that's yet another reason why this, we think this thing should continue to go forward.
And Mr. Chair, if I, I think of your call, when we first proposed the conditions back in February, we were also working with the board's consultant, who we said, we, you know, we were happy with taking care of some of the consultant's review at the time those submittals were made. And so there were offers, I think, I think there is a lot of alignment on what's been proposed, and we continue to do that. I think there might be some nuances in the language that is the concern.
If I could, if I could just refresh my memory, I think at our last session where the consultant was here, I think we got to the point where the plan, the design, wasn't sufficient to answer his questions. So I guess the sort of underlying, my, let's get, hold the review off for a minute. But at some point, you said by the time we go for a building permit, as I understood it, the design will be sufficiently firmed up, my word, that we could answer those questions. And I think that's what we're trying to get, is an opportunity to ask and look at those questions. So that's.
And I do think there's alignment there.
But that means we need to get back together, that's the key. How do we, how do we find language that says we get back? we get back together when the plan is done or firmed up? I, I don't know what the right word is. Done may not be the right word. But to the point where you know enough that we could have a meaningful exchange with our consultant to answer some of the questions, which I think you already know what his questions are. And how do we get the opportunity to, once you know what, what your plan is gonna be, before you, well, put the shovel in the ground, let's say? I don't know when you have to spend money with Eversource, but.
Before, before a shovel goes in the ground. Before you write the check.
The question is, how do we find a way to get back together to publicly explore those questions so that, that the answers are known? And, and we may get to the point where we don't like the answers, but I'm not sure, according to my understanding of what you said, that we would be allowed to not grant the extension anyway. Is that true?
I mean, yeah, I mean, again, our, our position is, our legal position is, and, and, you know, it's, you can test it, but I'm very confident about that. The case law is clear. If you show good cause, that extension is automatic. And then the question is, how long is the good cause? And, you know, that's, we, we just got the SIP order, so we will be able to have, we'll be able to know. I'll tell you this, we'll be able to know much more, maybe not everything, but much more about the, about Eversource's timeline in, in August than today.
But notwithstanding, we can't, I don't think we're, we're gonna necessarily meet at the minds of, do you have a?
No, we're not. I, I totally, I appreciate that.
But can we find a way that moves us forward so that when you do have a design, that we could get back together and, and discuss it? And maybe we can't approve it or deny it, but at least discuss it in a public forum.
And that's, I mean, that's something that we can certainly work on in language with back and forth.
I don't know if that, I'm speaking for myself only. There's four other guys sitting here, so.
How I read.
So you answered my question, that perhaps we could satisfy my objective.
Your request. How, how I read it is, you don't want to come back before us. I get that. I mean, that's, that's your position. I understand that. What you're asking for is more time. So the end of July comes, we'll give you the benefit of the doubt when the legislation gets passed. How much further past the end of July is it before you have your final agreement with Eversource where you write the check and put the shovel in the ground? Is it another month? Is it another three months? By the time you're done, the project's five years old. That's, that's the long and the short of it. It's a five-year-old project. We have learned gobs since the day that this project first came before us. And to, to give a blanket extension on a project that could very well be outdated or unsafe when the time comes to build it because of changing technology, for me, is a problem. So I, I, I mean, I don't know how the other planning board members feel, but for me, that's a sticking point.
And if, I just, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't think the problem is the concept of, at least for 150 to 100, I'll just say, coming back to the planning board is not the concern. I think our concern was the way the language was drafted. We want to make sure we come back and you're looking at the right thing and it's not completely re-review on the project again with complete discretion. If, if it's a matter of the project being consistent with, you know, all requirements, all laws, the, the original site plan approval, current best practices in technology, like if we know the universe of what the planning board's concerns or considerations will be, that, that, that helps us make a decision to go forward. If it's a complete discretion, unbridled discretion as we approach the building permit and we've invested millions of dollars into the work, that is where the concern comes. So it's the way, the drafting was, is the concern.
We, we still have to operate within the guidelines of the zoning bylaws. We, we can't just arbitrarily say we want, you know, three extra bunkers to protect the batteries from the water. But it's still, it's still a five-year-old project. That, that, that's, that's it for me. I don't know what else to say. And, and my feeling is, is you're trying to circumvent the planning board's authority by going to two entities for an approval that aren't, that aren't educated enough to make that decision.
Well, again, we don't have to go to anybody for approval.
Well, that's your opinion, and I appreciate that opinion. But that's not what's, that's not what's. If you, if you, if you want to test the waters and go to a vote and get it, and get it rejected and go to court, that is certainly your position, and I respect that. But, but don't, please don't tell me, don't sit there and tell me that you already have this extension in the bag. All right, because I don't appreciate that.
So, Mr. Chairman, with, with respect, all I'm saying is that, that's our position. And, but that's, we don't want to have to test the waters. We want to work with you. And what I'm telling you is the red line, what we accepted, we accepted everything except for a very broad, a very broad sentence that gives unfettered discretion to the planning board. You know, that, that's just not something that, 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 at least for 27 Charge Pond, we can agree to at this time. I'm happy to go back to the client. And if we want to talk with your town council and we want to narrow that, there's always a way. Because we'd much rather, we, we would much rather be collaborating with the town. So, and, and in my view, this was, it was language that we didn't accept and, and we never, we didn't get anything back. It was all, it was just, okay.
Did you, did you voice your concern to town council or to the planning office?
I've talked to town council about this many times. He's, we have a very good relationship.
Okay, and is, and is any of these conversations documented for the board, or is this?
Unfortunately, we're not getting any.
We, we don't get any information on this subject. So, you know, we have to take your word that these conversations took place and that the contexts were X.
I mean, he's, I, I think he's, he's an excellent lawyer. We have been talking to him about the process and the procedure in, in this, in this body, even up to Friday.
Unfortunately, again, that, that's a problem for us. That's a problem for us because we don't get the benefit of those discussions.
If, if we could facilitate his involvement on future conversations, we'd be happy to.
I, I think it's, it's probably best if you don't go directly to him. He doesn't.
He, he assists us. He's not the decision-maker.
We recognize that.
Well, that, I think you kind of shot yourself in the foot by talking to him directly and not documenting any of the conversations. Because now we don't have the, the benefit of those conversations. I mean, if, if it was something that we were privy to and his opinion was the same as yours and it was on the record as such, it might be a different conversation we're having tonight. But we don't have any of that information.
It's, for, for a lawyer to directly contact someone that's represented by council without, without the consent, it turns into some ethical issue. So we have to be really careful who we talk to on, on the town side. And they're, it's represented by council. That's who we have to talk to. There's nothing that we could do on our side to, to, to do that. That's, that would be a problem for us.
I would, I would think that that would be, at, at point, at this point, there's no litigation. So it's a matter of fact finding. So if you sent, if you sent an email to the chair and CC'd Rich Bowen and said, these are the points that we're concerned about, can we get together and talk about them? I don't see how that's an ethical issue.
We're happy to do that. We're happy to do that.
I know, but you, like you said, that was April. Now we're in June. So now you're asking for another two months, at the least.
One, one thing we need to understand is, we don't have free access to the, to the town council. We're enjoined from talking to town council. Under, except under very specific rules.
So that's very, that's very helpful to know. There, there is a way that we, we can circumvent that. There, that, we can easily do that.
Yeah.
And again, I mean, I think that the bottom line that I just want to convey is, I think there's a willingness to work on the conditions.
Yep, yeah, I'm not gonna beat that horse to death anymore. Jane?
No, I'm just sitting here trying to figure out if there's a mechanism that we have that we can orchestrate that coming to the table at a later date.
But it's, my concern is, is in the meantime, this legislation that they're bringing to the table may preempt our opportunity to do that.
Well, so you think that doing it more quickly, doing it more quickly would beat the, beat the legislation?
Well, I'm, I'm not really looking to beat the legislation. I just think that we're gonna be put in a defensive position with little or no ammunition to protect ourselves if we wait until the legislation passes and this is still not resolved to some.
And they'll resolve it for us. And they'll resolve it for us.
Correct.
Sounds like that's gonna happen.
That's kind of what's going.
It sounds like that's gonna happen anyway.
Possibly.
That's, that's the big problem you have, Mike. If they make all these sweet, hard deals in the back room, we're the ones that gotta suffer. We pay the consequences eventually. And.
So, I, I agree with what you're saying. And what we need to do is, what is our best strategy to move forward with that? My thought is, they've offered to work with us. If we close, we could do two things. We could vote now to either extend for good cause or say we don't find that's, we could do that now.
Yep.
Or, and then, and then they would have to take, depending on whichever decision, if we said we extend for good cause, I think everybody would go home and there wouldn't be any, any further discussion. But if, if, I'm just.
I, I understand what you're saying. But if we, if we extend for good cause, we still have that concern of that project sitting there festering.
Oh, no, no, I'm agreeing. So I'm just trying to lay out the options. If we don't extend for good cause, that, then it's either gonna go to litigation or this law is gonna pass and we're gonna get overturned by legislative fiat. So I'm kind of getting to the position that leaving the door open to continue to work together isn't a bad option. But that's, I'm just deliberating. That's why we talk out loud.
There's, there's, there's the vote to.
The what?
The vote.
Oh, no, that's what I said.
The head count for the vote.
This is a simple majority.
So you need three out of five?
Three out of four. One of the issues that we're struggling with is, Mr. King, his, his term ends at the end of June, and he's not going.
I, I won't, if this continues on past the 24th, I'm not available to vote. So now your, your head count is diminished by one.
Understood.
That, that's the other thing we're kind of logistically working through.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have a, it's not an open hearing, so there's no like continuance. So it's whoever is present at the night of the vote is the quorum. But understood.
Well, yeah, but we wouldn't have people vote who haven't been through the two years or two and a half years we've been working together. Well.
I don't think they could anyway.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so we just need to decide. Do we want to continue or do we want to end this tonight?
Well, I mean, I haven't asked Sam to chime in. What's your, what's your thoughts, Sam?
I was ready to vote a year ago.
So is that a motion?
Make a motion, we deny the extension.
I think we have to make a motion, take the vote, write the vote.
That's, that would be.
That's illegitimate?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have.
Mike, I think is, if we're gonna make that motion, we have to articulate why we don't find good cause.
We don't have to do it tonight. I've already, I've already confirmed that. We have 14 days.
We do have 14 days to articulate.
I have it in an email.
No, no, I understand. We have 14 days to write the decision.
To write the decision. So I guess my question to you prior to asking for a second to Sam's motion is, are you firm in your position that you do not want to come back before the board for a review of the project prior to construction? If you're firm in that position, I'm, I'm gonna accept his motion and ask for a second. It could go either way. I'm not saying it's gonna go up or down, but, you know, the motion's on the table.
I think we'd have to take the matters separately, to be honest, Mr. Chairman.
The matters as in the projects?
Yes.
I mean, wait, I mean, we could certainly do that. They both have project numbers.
Yeah, no, no. We've only been, as a courtesy, running them together. They are distinct matters.
I mean, all, all I would say, all I would say to that is, we've never said we would want to come back before the board. What we said is that the language in that.
No, you've, you've eloquently said that several times.
So I'm just, that, that's all I'm saying.
And again, had we been privy to the conversations with council and had that information, then it might be an easier conversation. But we don't.
I make a motion, we deny the extension of Project 720 Borrego Systems, 27 Charge Pond Road.
Second. Hey, we have a motion on the floor by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Jane? No, it's a tough decision.
It's a really tough decision.
It is, and it's been a lot of work. I mean, we got several years invested in this.
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
No.
And Chair votes aye.
I make a motion, we deny the extension of Project 920 Borrego Solar Systems, 150 Tiwanet Road.
Mr. Chairman, when, when appropriate, could I just make a statement about that one?
Yeah, before the vote, sure.
Um, with the, the, the project proponent for 150 would accept their conditions as drafted in exchange for their extension. If that modifies how people would vote.
Well, it certainly could modify the vote, absolutely. Okay, so the, the proponent will accept the request for them to come back before the board prior to beginning construction for final approval by the planning board.
Correct. As drafted in the planning board's version of.
The original conditions of approval.
They were circulated to us in, in March with incorporated your consultant's comments.
Okay, well, it's good information. Okay, well, it's good information. I, I don't know which way the vote will go, but thank you for that.
Just, just a point of order before we act on Sam. I, I'd like to move that going forward, we separate these two matters.
That's what we're doing right now.
No, no, but I meant, whatever we do...
All together.
All together, we don't, we don't hear them together.
Yeah, now, now that they've articulated that there's change, there's differences, I, I think that is prudent.
Yes, so let's just not hear them together going forward. We appreciate that we've been working, but I think we're moving...
We agree. No problem.
Okay, um, could you restate that motion, Sam?
I make a motion, we deny the extension of Projects 920 Borrego Solar Systems 150 Tionne Road.
You have a second?
Second.
There was a motion by Sam Corbett to deny, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
No.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
No.
And Chair votes aye.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you for coming in tonight. Thank you.
It's been good working with you guys, honestly. I know we have our differences, but you've been awesome to work with.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next up under preliminary business, six dash 24, TJP Realty Trust LLC, A&R Over Jordan Road.
You must assume that we're gonna approve it. Nope, here it is right there.
I think Sonya assumed that.
I got it.
Good evening. My name is Jake Frickie, F-R-I-C-K-E. Tonight, I'm here with Cape and Islands Engineering, representing TJP Realty Incorporated for an A&R plan dividing, uh, existing parcel, uh, MAP 20 Lot 135D on Over Jordan Road. This is a division which we feel meets the A&R requirements as the three conveyance lots, uh, buildable conveyance lots are, have the adequate amount of frontage on a private way, which was in existence when the subdivision control law was adopted, and we feel that Over Jordan Road has sufficient width grade in construction to provide adequate access. The fourth lot in the rear is not a buildable lot. It has no frontage and is for conveyance purposes only.
You can't move forward without them. You have to be notified.
What's that?
You can't move forward without them. You can't do it without notification neighbors.
Well, it's a incomplete application.
Right.
So, uh, just a couple of process questions. Josh, when did this application come in? Before or after the new procedures?
It just came in. Oh, you mean...
After June 1st or before June 1st? Do you know when you submitted? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to...
I, I do not know when it was submitted.
I think it was after. It goes after June 1st.
So, we didn't implement the new procedures yet?
Um, I wouldn't say fully, no.
Okay.
No, we're still working through some technicalities of that application.
So, so we don't know whether the Butters have been notified or not?
Well, that's standard practice for the application.
Yeah, but there's nothing that states the Butters have been notified. Usually the green cards are in the back of...
Yeah.
Back of the folder and they're not there.
Yeah, I don't know. I can run over to the office to see if they're in the office, but...
Ken's online, he's like answering.
I'm sorry?
Ken's online, he's like answering.
Go ahead, Ken.
It's A&R. There is no notification of a Butters with an approval not required type subdivision.
Says right here, Butters notifications mailed certified to a Butters and mailed regular to a Butters and it's checked that it was completed. So, do we do that just for exercise on A&Rs?
I don't know, I don't know who checked that and I don't know why it was checked.
Oh, well, there it is, right there.
Always go by that. Always.
I, I don't honestly remember. I mean, I, I don't remember one way or the other for A&Rs.
What's your input, Josh? Do we need the, the Butters notifications for an A&R or don't we?
No, it doesn't sound like it. Ken's opinion is that it's not required.
That, that's...
The application that you guys have used historically for...
It's on the application form.
We always have.
All right.
Unless it's identified in your rules and regs that you notify them for a Butters, Ken is stating that it's not part of, of required A&R. Submit.
I will look at the...
By state law, it's not required.
Yeah.
That's why it's called approval not required.
That wasn't particularly funny.
Sonya has her hand up.
Sonya?
Mr. Chair, good evening. It's actually an X, um, so it's an approval not required. We don't notify a Butters. Um, it's an X. It's not a check mark. If you compare it to the rest of the checkboxes, that means that I, I didn't notify a Butters. We don't ever notify a Butters for approval not required.
Okay.
And that application actually was stamped, if you look at the application, it was actually stamped in with a mark on May 30th.
That, that's okay. We'll go forward with the input from the planning office that the notifications to a Butters are not required for this. Go ahead.
Thank you.
And as, so, as sort of, as outlined, this is a, an A&R to divide one lot into four, three of which are buildable and have the required zoning frontage and area, and the fourth of which is for conveyance purposes only.
Do I have a question for the planning office? Mr. Chair, through you to Mr. Buckland or to Mr. Flaherty? Ken, are you there? Yes, um, it's, it's noted as a frontage on a private way. My understanding, when I've done these in the past, is it has to be frontaged on an accepted way by the town. Is this an accepted way even though it's a private way?
No, it's, it's, it's a, it's not an accepted way, as far as I know, uh, but it is of suitable width grade in construction. It's a paved road at this point.
But the A&R says it has to be frontaged on an accepted way, doesn't it? Isn't that what the, the rules?
That's one of the criteria, yes. The other criteria is a way of suitable width grade in construction.
Okay, so it does meet that second criteria.
That's correct.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be an accepted way. I gotta go back and read the A&R. Okay, thank you. You answered my question. Oh, I thought I handed you one. It's right there.
Okay. Mike, do you have any, do you have any questions?
No, no.
So, this is in a velocity zone? All three lots are in a velocity zone?
Uh, the three, the three lots which, which comply with zoning regulations are in the velocity zone.
Okay, I don't have anything further.
Sam? Carl?
Uh, can you come back to me? I'm reading the rules and regs.
Oh, well, I don't have any questions either, so it's, it's on you.
Okay, so, Ken, the three items in the criteria don't list what you said in the subdivision rules and regs. It doesn't say an adequate way, and maybe it does. It says a way that the town clerk certifies is maintained and used as a public way. You said it doesn't meet that criteria. A way shown in a plan that was previously approved in accordance with the subdivision control law or a way in existence prior to May 11th, 1951. That's what the rules and regs say.
Which rules and regs is that? That was your version of it?
Our rules and regs.
Uh, that doesn't purport to, uh, the, the state law, which allows a way of suitable width grade in construction.
Okay, th- this particular paragraph hasn't changed in the subdivision rules and regulations in a long time. So, you're saying we need to revise the subdivision rules and regulations because they're not in conformance with state law?
That's correct. If that's what, if that's how they read now, they're not in conformance with state law.
I don't know what to do, sir. I, I, I trust that he says that's what's in the state law. I don't understand how this could have been around. And, and I've used these every time. I ask the same questions every time. Okay, I, I accept your explanation, Mr. Buckland, but then it's an action we need to fix.
I agree.
Uh, so for the record, Patty, could you note that we need to review the subdivision, um, rules and regulations with respect, respect to A&R? Could you record that as an action, please? And could you read the subdivision rules and regulations adopted February 26, 2024 to the record, please? I'm just speaking to the, the minute taker. Let me get the A&R handbook. I don't know what, I, we can do whatever you want with this.
I mean, as far as the...
Other than that, everything else...
Everything else is fine. The size and, and the, the frontage is fine. I'm assuming he's just taking, that road was just recently paved, wasn't it? Looked pretty fresh. So, he's taking advantage of someone else's hard work to, to get a quote-unquote "accepted way."
I think it was his hard work.
Did you pave that whole road?
I, I did not personally pave that road, no.
He thinks so.
I'm, I'm Cape and Islands Engineering. I'm just representing the client. I don't, I don't know what his personal business is.
So, again, Mr. Chair, through you to Mr. Flaherty, uh, as representative of Conservation Commission. I know that Over Jordan Road has been before Conservation Commission writ large.
Yes.
Is there anything you have to say to this application that informs our decision?
Um, as far as the subdividing of these lots, no. There was an application for the road to be paved, which it is now done. There was a discussion about widening the road and what that had to, in respect to removal of trees, which was addressed. They have to be replanted. It's possible that some of the replanting could end up on some of these lots, but I don't think that affects your decision in any way tonight. There is an open order of conditions that needs to be closed out, which I have heard from an attorney about the process for that, so...
Doesn't affect our decision, though.
I don't think so.
And this A&R won't affect any action that you have?
Uh, concurrently, they're in front of the Conservation Commission now for structures on these three lots. So, a non-decision would, you know, probably have them continue their hearings until this is finalized, but...
Oh, so they've, they've come before you presuming that these lots will exist in this new form?
Correct.
That's a little bit putting the cart before the horse, isn't it?
I don't submit the applications.
It has size, frontage, and access.
Yeah.
And I've seen the road. The road does look, does look good.
So, I move that we accept the A&R, uh, zero six twenty-four, TJP Realty Trust LLC, A&R Over Jordan Road. As it meets the, the criteria for an A&R.
Uh, we have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Um, let's get the Mylar sign, see if you can take that away with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just so you're aware, the engineer for Grace Lighthouse, uh, has joined the chat. He's in the Zoom.
He's gonna present via Zoom?
I can pick this up.
What's that?
They were done last. They had a couple of things for Mr. Cudaro. Could you just check with him to see if we've got everything done?
That is stuff you want.
A double ender.
We'll go this way. Carl will have to wait.
It doesn't say that can't sell.
I'm sorry?
The A&R handbook doesn't say.
To make sure.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming up.
Have a nice weekend.
Yep, you too. Uh, okay, so you said the gentleman from Grace Lighthouse is on. All right, so we will go a little bit of out of order and next up, under continued public hearings, four dash twenty-four Grace Lighthouse Fellowship, special permit for site plan review, 2703 and 2703 R Cranberry Highway. If you could introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm David Beguerie. Last name spelled B-E-G-U-E-R-I-E, and I'm the pastor of the church.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
And you, sir?
I'm Jack Savashtano. I'm just part of the church.
We definitely need your last name spelled.
Of all trades.
Could you spell your last name for us? Yep, definitely needed that one spelled. Thank you. Um, okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is, uh, Damir Alexander Von Rohrbach.
Could you speak up a little bit, sir? It's hard to hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Damir Alexander Von Rohrbach. I, um, with Time Bond and I am the engineer on this project.
I'm good.
My, you can spell this D-A-M-I-R-V-O-N space R-O-H-R-B-A-C-H.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and I apologize for being late. I had technical difficulties with my computer.
No worries. We, we were, we thought we were doing you a favor, but...
You were.
And you guys are now, so we appreciate it.
Okay, well, we, we feel bad. You had a couple of late nights with us, so we thought we'd try to be nice about it.
Thank you.
Um, okay. I, I saw Phil's response to the, to the peer review and the questions and the, so I, I really don't have anything else to ask. Hope you have anything.
So, through the chair to Mr. Cudaro, I believe at our last meeting, everything was pretty much done. There were a couple of... There was nothing really remaining.
There was nothing remaining through, through the chair. They had addressed everything at the last meeting.
Right.
Uh, I think the issue was, it was just coming to the board very late and you just needed the opportunity to review everything.
Right, right. And then, uh, I do believe at the last meeting, you recommended three conditions that we should consider, uh, for approval, uh, if we were to approve. Could you, I could restate them as I remember them or if you could want to restate them. Had to do with the DOT approval, the SEPTIC approval from the Board of Health. It was, oh, that the, we acknowledged that the fire department...
Yes.
That the turnaround doesn't meet the strict requirements, but the fire department had, um, accepted the turning path.
That's correct. They have authority to, authority to accept changes that are not in strict compliance with the...
Right, so those were three, two conditions and a note that you suggested that we put on the, any, if we were to approve.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So, I, for the record, I accept those. I have no questions. I, I'm, I'm happy with the application.
I am too. Uh, Mike, do you have anything?
No, I'm, I'm happy with it.
Jane?
I'm good.
Sam? Is there anything you'd like to add, sir, before we... What's that?
We'll have to close.
Well, I, we, yes, so say I wanted to give him a chance to talk before we close public hearing.
We need to see if there's anybody who wants to make final remarks in the...
That's what I just said. I was gonna give him a chance to talk before I asked.
Okay, sure.
Is, is there anything you'd like to add, sir, um, to the conversation?
Um, we just opened the DOT. We just opened the DOT permit application, so we are in the process of doing that, and we're also going to be submitting the Board of Health application as well shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Don't talk past the sale.
That's right. I'm surprised he said it. I would have said no. Thank you. Being a public hearing, is there anybody that would like to step forward and comment? Anybody online? Okay, seeing none and hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing for 4-24 Grace Lighthouse Fellowship.
No move.
Is that it?
A motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor. Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much. Good luck with your project. Oh, that's right.
You're not done?
I put the cart before the horse.
Well, no, the horse left the barn. Now you got to get the cart moving out.
I entertain a motion to approve 4-24 Grace Lighthouse Fellowship.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor. Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
I, subject to the two conditions that we discussed earlier and the note to be on the plans that we discussed earlier and all the standard.
All the standard language on a.
Yeah, we have 60 days to write. We had a draft, but it's not before us. I don't, I don't remember. We didn't add anything particular, so the standard conditions of approval with those.
With those two additions.
Two additions and the note.
Okay. And the chair votes aye. Now I could say congratulations.
Thank you. Can I have a question? I do have a question to the chair before you all applaud, because we're very happy about this. So as you know, we have had funding held up because of the process that we've had to go through. Does this allow us to move forward with all the things necessary to close our funding and get the funding that we need based upon that we can bring the buildings to the property?
Well, we still have to sign.
There's a 20-day appeal process. There's a 20-day window.
For someone to come forward and complain.
So we can't do anything for at least 20 days, or?
That's between you and your lenders. Just be aware that there's a 20-day window that somebody could come up and say, I object.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
What about your lender?
Yeah, I mean, if you have the conversation with your lender.
Guys are good. Okay.
We're good.
They may be able to put a lot of the pieces of the puzzle in place in anticipation, and then just hold off putting pen to paper until the 20th day.
And the only other thing, I see, no, we've had several hearings. No one has come and said anything.
Right, yeah, it's all been positive, so.
We're all unanimous and positive, so talk to your lender.
Thank you.
Tell him to get his checkbook out.
How much risk do you like to take?
We're in that business.
All right, thanks so much for coming.
Risk mitigation business. That's your business.
Well, we move forth on faith. That's how we do it.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was a pleasure working with you.
Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Good luck.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
John? Have we been dropped?
Okay.
We've been dropped.
Can I take a three-minute?
On Zoom or cable?
That sounds good. Actually, I'm going to follow you out the door. We're going to take a, folks, if you don't mind, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Try cable.
Okay, everyone. Get started. Hello? Hello? Next stop in the Continued Public Hearings, 12-22 Wareham, Mass., 3 LLC, 91 and 101 Ferring Hill Road. It's my understanding that there's someone on Zoom tonight for this project. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
We can. If you could identify yourself, please.
Yes, certainly. My name is Greg Carey, C A R E Y. I'm a senior project manager with RWE Clean Energy, and I'm standing in this evening for Joe Shanahan. Joe could not be at a meeting tonight. We're requesting a continuance to the June 24th meeting.
Okay. Do we know what's on the agenda for the 24th? I know that meeting was starting to fill up.
Let's see.
There's nothing in the list of projects.
No, I don't see anything queued in the list of projects for the 24th.
On the bottom of the agenda, there's nothing on the 24th.
Nothing on the agenda here.
I know there's, I know there's projects on the whiteboard.
Oh.
We can continue it till the 24th if the board so chooses. Just be conscious of the fact that the last time I was in the planning office, I did see some projects already dedicated to the 24th, so it may end up being a long night. So if you're okay with that and the board is.
Sonya's still in the.
Yeah, but she's not in her office. I don't think she'll remember.
Oh.
Was there reason? I'm sorry, I was up.
No, that's, that's good.
Apparently, we're not on Verizon right now, according to my wife. According to the control here, we're on.
What do you mean on Verizon?
On television, on cable.
Oh, cable. Okay, now I didn't understand, because I don't have.
I've been going back and forth, because she's watching it right now when we're gone, and they're showing me it's, it's good.
Yeah.
So that's what I've been doing. I'll stop doing it.
If you could fill us in on the reason for the ask for the continuance, please?
I apologize.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Joe Shanahan sent an email to the Planning Board and Ken Buckland a couple of weeks ago stating that the Superior Court is scheduled to issue a notice of status review on June 14th. And so he thought it would be helpful to have that review issued so that it could be discussed at the following meeting on the 24th.
Okay. Does anyone have a concern with granting the continuance?
My opinion, we don't need to.
What's that?
My opinion is we don't need to. We are obligated to get the finding of the Concom, which we did. It's being challenged. Had nothing to do with us.
Right.
Or our vote. We can discuss it at length if you'd like to, but there's no reason. As I've said before, I was ready to vote a year ago.
Well, I think in this particular one, letting the, letting the court do their thing and giving them another two weeks, I think is, my opinion is, is a good thing.
There's no guarantee we'll have.
On June 24th, never mind, it's not July.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. My mistake.
I just want to make sure that you're here. You've been through this for six and a half years or so. Courts traditionally aren't all that reliable as far as dates go. So I would, if we're going to continue it, I would say that would be a drop dead date for me anyway, so you're available to vote. You have, you have one more meeting. That's it.
Yep. Okay.
Those are my concerns.
No, understood.
So I'm just wondering if the board has made up its mind and is any point. Although Mr. Shanahan isn't here, so it would be unfair.
I think it would be unfair to ask for a vote without him here. So, okay.
That's fair.
All right, so.
He's been there for six years as well.
So, all right, so there has been a request to continue to the 24th of June. I know we don't really need a vote, but all in favor. Mike?
Aye.
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Yeah, we do need a vote. Aye.
And the chair votes aye. There it is.
No, no, we do actually do need a vote to continue, I believe.
So you are all set, sir. We will put you on the agenda for the 24th.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
Okay. Next up, 15-23 Hidden Trails Off County Road, Special Permit for Cluster Development and Special Permit Request.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Peter Titlebaum for the applicant, along with the project engineer Brad Bertolo. Nice to see you again.
Spell your name for the record, sir.
T E I T E L B A U M.
Thank you. And Brad?
Good evening, Brad Bertolo, J C Engineering, B E R T O L O.
Thank you.
All right, just to give you a brief history, we submitted plans back in September of 2023 for a Form C definitive subdivision with site plan review and a special permit for cluster development. The plans that we submitted, along with drainage calculations, were peer reviewed by the town's consultant. There were just a couple minor revisions. Final plans that are still in front of you today were finalized in the middle of March. Since then, we've been requested by the board to address some comments from the public regarding different aspects of our project, one including 21E, which we voluntarily did to counter some statements that were made by the Butters. It's not a process that is required by this board, but we felt it was necessary. We have since replied to a number of comments that seem to keep getting repeated by the Butters. We really don't have much more information to submit. We have, at least at the last meeting, the peer review consultant had stated that we had met all the requirements, the applications, the plans. Where we did address one item. I'll let Peter talk about that, since he had responded this week from, I guess not even a butter, but a nearby resident requesting or questioning easements. So I'll let Peter discuss that right now.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, there were two pieces of correspondence that we submitted. First was a letter that I sent in responding point by point to a letter sent in by Mr. Mahalik, who was nearby to the project. He raised five points. I responded to each of them. He wanted to know about water and sewer. We told him that we're going to be doing nitrogen-reducing septic systems to handle the septage. The property has already been bettered by the Wareham Fire and Water District, so that's taken care of. Mr. Mahalik asserted that he had easement rights to travel westbound on the old sort of dirt road, if you will, pathway to get out to County Road. I looked at it, and what I found was that in 1943, the company that operated the sand removal operation purchased the property from the farmer. This was the first, you know, large conveyance out of the farm. Mr. Mahalik's property, and at that time, the only easements that were created was an easement in the deed in favor of the company that bought and was operating the sand removal operation to travel easterly over to Squirrel Island Road. There was no grant of easement to any of the Butters, and neither did Mr. or Mrs. Harju retain any rights to subsequently convey rights to future third parties, if you will. So I stated that. We have a much more detailed letter from the law offices of Jessica Clark. She's a title attorney right here in town, and I believe she's also on Zoom if the board has any questions for her. So we don't believe that Mr. Mahalik cannot assert easement rights that were never created. And quite plainly, if Mr. Harju had wanted to protect his ability to convey future rights over property that he was conveying at the time, then he could have put that in the deed, and he did not. We received another letter, or you did today, asserting essentially the same thing, that there were rights by an Abutter to travel westbound to get to County Road, but the same thing applies. The properties that are owned by this Abutter were granted by the Harjus after the Whitehead Sand Removal Operation had already obtained the property. So again, you can't assert an after-the-fact easement once somebody else has the property.
Mr. Chair, just can I interject to Mr. Titlebaum? Could you just, for the record, cite the dates, Mr. Mahalik's letter, your letter rebuttal? For the record, we have to record all the documents.
So could you cite those, or if not, I'll have to go back and? Okay, last Monday, which would have been the third, was when I believe the Planning Board received Mr. Mahalik's letter.
Okay.
I replied, I think, late Thursday, which would have been 4th, 5th, 6th. And then Attorney Clark's office submitted their letter the next day on the 7th.
Okay, so for the record, we want to capture those documents.
Yes, and I'll repeat that again. Mahalik letter received June 3rd. Titlebaum response on behalf of the applicant on June 6th, and Jessica Clark on behalf of the applicant, June 7th.
And then there was a fourth letter we got today from.
Attorney Burke?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And again, that was in the same vein as Mr. Mahalik's letter asserting easement rights to traverse to the West.
I'm just trying to get all the.
Right. Mr. Chair, at the applicant, I would like to read into the record another document, which
I am using to inform my decision. I want to, I want to read into the record a document titled Massachusetts Streets and Ways for Surveyors by F. Sidley Smithers, Esquire, 2011. It's a 78-page document available on, and I sent the link. It's a 78-page document that provides a lengthy discussion of public and private ways in Massachusetts, including establishment and maintenance of ways, installation of utilities, easements, paper streets, discontinuation, and subdivision control, including detailed references. So I am reading that at the recommendation of Town Council to inform my decision. So it's been published. It's available on the Mass MGL site. So I'm just reading it, but I want it on the record that it's informing my decision.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
And I don't know if the board has any, any further questions, or if they would like to speak with Attorney Clark, who I understand is on the Zoom.
Jessica?
Yes.
Yes, if Ms. Clark wants to weigh in, by all means.
Good evening. This is Attorney Jessica Clark. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my findings are consistent with what Attorney Titlebaum described to you. We detailed our research in a letter which we submitted on the 7th, along with exhibits. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to help talk through them.
Okay, thank you. Have you seen the letter?
I've seen the letter. I've read them. I read Mr. Titlebaum's letter. I think Mr. Bertolo also forwarded that similar letter with attachments, the deeds. It's very arcane. But I, I did see the language about the Harjus not retaining rights to grant. I saw that language highlighted in that, in those documents. That's, that's all. I did see language that said that.
Thank you.
Okay. Mike, do you have anything?
Not at this time. I'll come back.
Come back. Jane?
Yeah, I don't have anything right now.
Sam? I mean, for me, I did see all the letters back and forth. The one thing that I did notice in the last letter that we got today, we all know how much I love the 11th hour information, was that the letter was very subjective. There was no detail in it, so I don't, I don't know.
Basically, the letter was a request not to close the public hearing to allow more fact finding, because I read that letter.
That's the way I look at it, too.
He didn't, he didn't.
Stick the foot in the doorway before the door gets closed.
Right.
Yeah.
If I might respond to that very point, Mr. Chairman, you know, we've been before you. you know, we've been before you, I think, what, starting in October? We certainly know that this particular abutter got, you know, direct notice. We've seen this abutter when we were out there with Conservation. He was walking along, sort of monitoring our group, you know, shepherding us along as we walked on our side of the fence, and he was on the other side of the fence. So, you know, to wait till the 11th hour...
Mr. Chair, as long as the public hearing is open, people are entitled to submit.
They are, they are.
So you could complain that it was late. They're entitled, up until we close the public hearing.
Right.
We'll weigh all those factors.
No, I understand that.
I don't think we need to belabor that point.
Yeah. It's just my concern is that people are taking issues that are more properly addressed in the courts when it comes to property rights and easements and things of that nature. And they're trying to... It seems to me that there's a concerted effort to try to drag you into the dispute, to delay things. And, you know, to the extent that that happens, that makes your jobs harder, it makes our jobs harder. And based upon what I think was a pretty conclusory letter from Attorney Clark's office, it's just a dead end. So I would just...
Thank you for your opinion. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. If there's nothing else from the board, I'll ask the public.
I don't think I have any... One moment. I don't think I had any... We answered most of my questions. I don't think I had anything for this. I do have a couple of statements later, but...
You want to wait till after the public weighs in?
Yeah, just depending on what action we take.
Okay.
I mean, it's my thoughts on things that have come up, and I just need to say them when we're ready to move forward.
Okay. Okay. Being a public meeting, if there's anybody present or online that would like to weigh in, now is your opportunity. Even with the wrong glasses on, I can still tell it's you, Ann.
It's been a while. Not for these guys. It's been too often, right? H A Y E S, Farmers Lane?
Spell your last name, please.
H A Y E S.
Thank you.
I have to speak for the animals, the vegetation.
Before we get too far in, Anne, you know my policy on regurgitation. Okay.
You made the exact same presentation at the last hearing. And you started, yes, you started exactly this...
No, but the watershed.
You started by saying, "I have to speak for the animals," and the...
Okay.
If you've got some nice new information...
Okay, I have to speak for the watershed. Okay? I did this at Conservation. It's familiar to me, but I don't remember yet. Okay. So up here is Ferring Hill. That's 44 acres. Right here is Hidden Trails. That's 36 acres of upland forest clearing. Forty-four, 36, that's 80. And then the Zimmer Farm is going to do the same, and the project is 18 acres. So that's 100 acres.
Okay, can I stop you there?
Yeah.
In all due respect, we have no idea if Ferring Hill's going to go through.
No, I know. But this is potential.
Well, potential is, if we had an approved project on Ferring Hill, then that argument may carry a little more weight. But right now, Ferring Hill hasn't been touched, and the Zimmer Farm hasn't come before us, so you're talking about maybes. So I don't know if that's really fair.
But if this goes through...
Mr. Chair, in fairness, we do not have a cumulative impact bylaw. We mentioned that and discussed that at length at the last meeting. Unfortunately, we're not allowed to consider cumulative impact.
What do we consider to protect the waterways?
Talk to your state legislature.
Pardon?
State.
State Legislature? Well, I've read the draft, and that's not looking good to protect water.
I'm sorry. We're bound by the bylaws.
At one point, we're going to rue the day that we didn't.
I do agree with your concerns, but...
It's happening all over the planet.
We have taken the idea of needing a cumulative impact bylaw under... We need to do it. And Ms. Gleason and I have talked, and we're continually trying to improve the bylaws. But right now, we don't have the ability.
I appreciate that. I will end with saying it is heartbreaking, and you all know it, to talk about the roads and not talk about the water. To me, that's on the moon. It doesn't make sense.
You could talk about the water with respect to this project.
I, well, I am.
But you started by talking about all the other projects.
The water is not just in one sole, 36 acres.
Understood, Anne.
Am I sitting down or getting up?
I raise my concern, just as long as you don't...
As long as you're bringing...
The water is not in this locale alone. The water is systemic, and it's affected by every bit of construction that happens. It's already been re-engineered by the bogs all around here. There's solar arrays here. And this is the waterway from the hill from Perry Hill at 92 feet that feeds the Wee Wee Antic and the Civic Inn. And these rivers are bright red on the map downstairs for absolutely no shell fishing because of the pollution. So if we can't think systemically, I think it's over. Nature is a system. Our aquifer is a system that relates to every bit of land formation. And our wells depend on honoring that system so that we can still drink.
Thank you. Appreciate the input, Anne. Is there anybody else in the public that wants to bring new information?
I just wanted to comment about the loss of the...
Identify yourself, please.
Sure, my name is Amy, last name Tamagany.
Could you spell that, please?
T as in Tom, A as in Mary, A G as in George, I and as in Nancy, I.
Thank you.
I just wanted to speak to the loss of the forest, the 37 acres. Is that something you'd be willing to listen, to something I prepared?
We've never seen your face before, so I would say yes.
Thank you. Wareham has lost over 300 acres of forest already. Science shows that preserving our forests with their intact ecosystems and biodiversity are critical to addressing the climate crisis we are facing. Forests combat the effects of climate change by providing cooler temperatures, mitigating flooding, and purifying the air. Undeveloped forested land is crucial to sequestering carbon, and forests are the only proven technology that Massachusetts has for sequestering carbon to achieve our net-zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, through you to Ms. Gleason, do you want to read into the record your... Although your note was relative to solar, it does have, it does speak to loss of forest. Do you want to read into the record or not?
We could do that. I have an article here that I will put up on the website saving 1,365 acres of forest. It's from an Audubon document or an Audubon publication. And associated with that, that I will also put up for the public record, is the Presidential Executive Order that was signed in 2021 that refers, it's commonly referred to as 30 by 30, and it has to do with conservation of at least 30% of U.S. land by 2030. So I think that's just something that we should all be aware of, that it's another thing that's out there along with the mandate to provide more housing and provide more solar, not in this instance, but...
So all kind of at odds with one another.
Yes, exactly.
Exactly right.
I just think it needs consideration, so...
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I haven't seen this article, so I can't, obviously can't comment in depth on it. But to the extent that it calls for a set aside of 30% of land from development, I would just, you know, again, point out that this project saves 75% from development.
I was thinking about that. Can you tell me how much of that is upland and how much of it is water?
The pond is 30 acres out of the 115 acres.
Okay. And so the upland that goes into conservation is... I'm not doing the math quickly enough.
It would be about 85 acres of non-water.
Non-water.
Non-water resource. Now, some of that, you know, as you know, is some of the sand that's been exposed from the operation. The other thing that regarding this project is we've talked about, you know, the project, the housing and the roadways encompass 36, 37 acres, something around that amount. But upon the request, I guess you could say, of the chairman of the Conservation Commission, we are looking to see if we can retain some of the trees on the lots. So we don't know if we're going to be clearing that much. I don't think it's going to be just a clear, you know, wipeout of the 36 or 37 acres. We're looking to try to save some trees. I know the last time we were out there with the chairman, you know, he was looking at some of the trees and saying, gee, this is a nice tree. This is a good specimen. And we're going to try to do our best to save that. So we don't know yet exactly how much clearing would happen. Obviously, the maximum would be what's the land that's intended for the development, but it may well be less than that.
Just so you know, I think this just came across my desk today, and I think I will probably put it into the record on every project that has clearing proposed. So I think we just all need to be aware of it. It's something that... We're aware of other things, maybe not so much this.
Yeah.
So I want this to be made more visible.
Well, I think we're, if I might, Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, we're proceeding under a cluster development bylaw that I think sort of pre-enshrined those values well in advance of this document coming out. I mean, you know, the whole purpose of the cluster development was to shrink the lot sizes so that somebody could come in, have the same amount of housing, but yet preserve more of the land.
Mr. Chair, again, I asked Ms. Hayes to sit down because she was repeating... He's saying the same thing we've already heard. He's not offering anything new.
That's fine. I'm happy to shut up.
I appreciate it, yeah. We're trying to move things forward. But, I mean, in fairness, I asked Ms. Hayes to sit down, or she wasn't offering new information. Mr. Titlebaum isn't offering new information.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak publicly to this? Anybody online?
Not at this time.
I don't think... I mean, does it behoove us? Does it benefit us in any way, shape, or form to keep this public hearing open?
I could speak my thoughts. That was one of the things I had thoughts on.
Okay. Lay it on me. Lay it on us.
Okay. So I believe one of the arguments... First, I think Mike has arguments, perhaps, for keeping the public hearing open. We might want to hear from him first.
Okay, we could start with him.
Then I'll... Mine are going to be very different than his.
Well, I still got an issue with ancient ways and so forth. You know, your opinions as an attorney, that's your job, is try to convince us that we're wrong. I'm not ready to close this public hearing by no means because I don't think your job's been done yet. The fire exit to get out of there. How are you going to go across private property to put a fire gate?
It'd be the fire department that would be crossing in an emergency. So the gate is on our property.
We would be taking advantage of the existing easement dating back to 1943 to go to the east, out to Squirrel Island Road. And so it would be our property that would be allowing the fire department to use it for that purpose. Well, I'm not... That's right in that deed. That the, at the time they conveyed, at the time the Harjus conveyed the property to the Whiteheads in 1943, it's mentioned right in there that they could go out to the east to get to Squirrel Island Road. So the people who purchased afterwards would have taken their land subject to that existing easement that the Whitehead brothers had.
I think we should send it before council, our council. I'm not satisfied with the answer. Really not.
Are we looking for the fire gate or are we not looking for the fire gate? Is your condition it any way you want? The residents of Squirrel Island, John Churchill, 14 Fellowship Circle.
Thank you.
If you want the fire gate, we'll give you the fire gate, which is proper planning. If you want us to eliminate the fire gate, then we'll eliminate the fire gate. I was trying to respect the residents, Mr. Letalia being one, I think he was in the audience. He is, he wants the fire gate. But now we're being told that they don't want the fire gate. I don't care how you condition the property. I think proper planning is to put a gate up, to allow or not allow. If the residents feel as though...
Proper planning should have two entrance and exits in there. You've got one way in, one way out of that property.
We meet all the requirements, and we do have access. Can you, you know you're Mr. Baptiste. You've been here forever. Whitehead got into their pit by which road? Whitehead track the trailers through Squirrel Island Road.
Squirrel Island Road.
Exactly, so you know that. So they obviously have access through Squirrel Island Road. We're willing to eliminate that access to respect the residents of Squirrel Island Road and put a fire gate up to allow only emergency vehicles to go. If you want emergency vehicles, and Mr. Letalia to have a key to that gate, if you want Mr. Fielding to have a key to the gate, if you want Mr., whoever you choose to have a key to that gate is fine by us. They're going to have a paved road instead of a dirt road. However, they do not have access via the deeds. That's pretty cut and dry. So condition it as you may, but to keep the kick in the can down the road, it's a private matter, and you always say that. So the fact that we cannot access that property, even though those track the trails did since 1942 to 2000, but yet we haven't been able to access that property, and actually, Mr. Bertolo got trapped in there by those residents at the end of Squirrel Island Road, that's, to me, it's a double standard. So I said my piece, and we can't keep on kicking. We'll condition it as you may. We're just trying to be proper planning because, quite frankly, like you said, I think we should be able to give Squirrel Island Road the ability to get out of there if there's something bad that happened on Squirrel Island Road. So we're trying to be a good... You want us to block it off? We'll block it off. We have no problem at all. But you're saying two accesses. Well, that's our access. So which way? We can't have, you can't have both. So it's up to the board to decide which one you want. You guys are the planning board. So you can tell us whether a fire gate, who gets keys to that gate? We really don't, it doesn't matter to us. What we have is a proper approval in front of you. And at this point, public comment really is only about... And at, at this point, public comment really is only about, they're talking about trees and, and what you have, a Form C, check the boxes, we have a site plan approval. Only reason why we need a site plan approval is because we're doing a cluster. So a denial of the site plan approval means that you want a full-blown subdivision with no 115 acres set aside. So three votes for Form C, four votes for the cluster. That's all really it comes down to, in, in simplicity. So, as I said my piece, and who, who gets access to that gate, I thought it was proper planning. If that, and you can talk to the gentleman or, or people at the end of Squirrel Island Road, if, if someone hits a pole on Wishbone, the service on Squirrel Island Road at the end, those four houses, they go out for a week at a time. We're providing electricity service to them as well. And we're not preventing them from using that road. We, we, the only reason why we did that is, the only reason why we had Ms. Clark write a letter is because of the allegations that came out late in the day on Monday. So this, this public comment just keeps on spiraling, if you will.
So, so you're going to supply power to Squirrel Island Road?
We're supplying, we're, to the end of Squirrel Island Road. Remember this, too, there's, Squirrel Island Road has power to Mr. Perry's house, I believe, or the gentleman actually on the left after, and then it's cut. Squirrel Island Road at the end gets their power from County Road through Walcott over to Ms., over 53 Mackey, which is, then it comes over to that, that, that path, goes down through, then hits the two houses at the end, and then goes all the way down to the property that was owned by, I forget the name, but there's like, there's three houses down there. All that comes off of County Road. So we're bringing that power now through. So reliability is now going to be underground, we're going to hit that last pole in service, even though they're in the audience, and listen to this, we're, we're going to provide a reliable electric, and a way for them to get out. Without, that road was only, last summer, we live on Fellowship Circle, a weekend, that road got, that path got cleared from Squirrel Island Road to County Road, through Mr. Pennington's property. And that got pat, we were, my wife was in the audience, and all, we heard machinery all weekend long, and we went out there, and they, and I have plenty of people that were, at the previous public hearing, that would attest to that. That was not a passable road 10 years ago. And all of a sudden, after this public hearing went forward, or this, this application went forward, they cleared all the way down. So Mr. Pennington put a gate up, as you may know, and, and you knew. And so Ms. Pennington put it up because they were using that road to get to the end of Squirrel Island Road. And I think they would, who knows why they were doing it? But they were not, it was not passable, and you, you know that. You've been in West Ham, and I was in West Ham, and I walked that property for 20 years now. So anyways, but we're not, we're not trying to prohibit anybody from rights. We, we know what the rights are legally, but however, we're willing to work with people. And we always have been, and always, we're very approachable. Bottom line is, I think a gate, a fire gate, or some type of gate, not what's there now. There's an abandoned truck now, rocks, two gates at the end of Hager Street, even though the property address is 163 Squirrel Island Road, but they're calling it Hager Street. So you can't, right now, you can't go access this property like you used to be able to for the 60 years that they were. So, I'm sorry to get long-winded, but the facts are the facts, and, and we can just keep on kicking the can down the road, but condition it. You know, that's what a special permit is, you can condition it any way you want. So you can, you can say, who wants keys to that gate, however you want. We want a locking, want a key code, and we give it to the three, four people at the end of Squirrel Island, we'll give it to them. Mr. Lattaliah wants the key code, we'll give it to him. It doesn't matter. Now they have the paved road, instead of trying to keep up with, a tree falls on that road, no one, whether they have rights or not, who's going to take care of it? Well, they took care of it on a weekend, which, we can talk about that in the future. However, they're going to have a paved road and reliable electric service. So this is a win-win. 115 acres of, of open space, you know, the project originally was approved under a Form C, no open space, acre and a half lots. Is that what the board wants? I don't think that's the proper, I don't think that's the proper, proper fit for this project. I think the proper fit is, is housing and 115 acres of open space. And access, we're not providing, or not, not prohibiting access to anybody. Even all the dirt bike riders, all the people that, we have on camera walking the property that they shouldn't be. So that's a whole nother issue, and we don't want to bring that up in front of the planning board. That's not, that's not the planning board's purview. And that's what I'm trying to sort of get at. So I hate to continue to, you know, we need, we need a decision before the end of June. I'm, I'll be honest with you, so. And that's where we're at. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I'm quiet, I'll be quiet for a little while, you, you can go.
I think, you asked, is there a reason for keeping the public hearing open? The only thought that I have on that matter, and I've thought about it a lot, is the pending action from Conservation. The only reason for keeping it open, and here's my thought process on that, is if we close the public hearing, that pending action will keep the, Mr. Churchill and company from taking any action until that has been resolved. If we close the public hearing and the resolution of the, of that, of that...
It's an appeal.
Appeal, yeah, thank you, I'm struggling for the right word. Is that the, the applicant needs to make changes to their plan. If we've closed the public hearing, we cannot accept changes to the plan. You, let me, I'm telling you my thought process, please let me finish, and we would then have to take a modification to that plan. Not that you couldn't move forward, but it would then require a new application for a modification to move forward. Still enabling you to move forward. Now, on the other hand, is if we close the public hearing and there is no order of, of superseding order of conditions, that requires a change to the plan, then you could move forward as soon as that is completed, without, without coming back. So that is, as I see, the issue. If, if there are required changes to the plans, assuming we approve, if we deny, it's a whole different, none of this makes any difference, but if, if we keep the public hearing open until such time as that order of conditions is resolved, we will continue to get a stream of, of input, which we will have to continue to consider. Perhaps we'll get new information. At the, at this point, mostly we're getting refinements, in my opinion, of the same...
Previous concerns?
Refinements or clarifications or amplifications. But in either case, I don't see that it slows the applicant down because they can't move forward until the appeal is resolved, as I understand it. So that, that, those are my thoughts. We could, we could close it, and if there's a negative decision, then we just, you just have to come back. And, and that's...
I think outside, personally outside of the Conservation issue, I don't see, I don't see any new information coming to us.
Other than Mr., was it Mr. Fielding who filed the, but, but again, I don't see that he's going to give us any, anything that, over...
Both Ms. Clark and Mr. Titlebaum had pretty clear information.
Yes, yeah, and I don't know if, if that attorney has had a chance to review that material or not.
And, and I, I have no doubt as much as I, it pains me to say it, if we do close the public hearing and we took a vote, and if it did get approved, I have no doubt there's going to be a, an appeal.
But, but where I was going is I think Mr. Titlebaum advised us that actions about right of way are going to be taken up in court anyway, and if we're satisfied that, that we've gotten the information that we can deal with, if there is an issue with title, that's going to go to Land Court.
Right, which is outside of...
So there are, there is, yeah, there is recourse for, for, we're not removing anyone's recourse if they're unhappy. I, I don't, so what I'm, I'm trying to talk myself into, I don't know we're going to get any new information, other than, other than Mr. Baptiste, who needs to be satisfied, I don't see that we're going to get new information by continuing the public hearing. We're going to continue to get a lot of, of concern, and, and we understand the impact on the fauna and the watershed Ms. Hayes has left, and we do understand the cumulative impact of all these changes in our community. We haven't got the tools yet to deal with that. We need to get those tools. And by the way, it's beyond just Wareham, it's regional concern. But we don't have the tools as a planning board, that's just why I said she needs to talk to our legislator. As a planning board, we don't have the tools to address the significant changes that are impacting southeastern Massachusetts and the communities around us. Now that, I'm not asking Mr. Churchill to take that on his shoulders to solve all those problems, but within the bounds of what we can do, we have to try and either deny bad projects or condition good projects.
To your point, I, I understand that, that we do run the risk of changes taking place on appeal, and we're willing to take those risks on. So if, if, I, I appreciate you sort of looking out for us in that regard as well, because I don't know if that was an intended consequence, but I think that's part of what, what you did say, is you're going to have to come back. And if we have to come back, we would certainly come back. And, you know, then the board decides whether it's a minor modification, and they can just say, okay, you know, you're moving this here to there, and it's not a problem, or if you think it's a major modification, we go back to public hearing. We understand those risks. And, you know, I, I think you're, the chairman was correct, this is going to be appealed no matter what. We just know it is, we, we, we see that any substantial projects in this town get appealed by the same people, time and time again. They've made a presence here during the public hearing, they've encouraged you to deny the permit, and we fully expect that they're going to file a Superior Court appeal. That's, that's just part of what, part of doing business, I guess, is, is in Wareham these days, when you've got people that do these things.
But it's important to, that they know that we've heard their concerns, and...
Oh, absolutely.
And it's important that the citizens know the process, how the process works.
Right.
So even if we were to move forward, that doesn't abrogate their rights.
Oh, no, absolutely. They can, they can go petition the courts, if, if they feel that they've, they've had some easements, and they can prove easements, then, then they should certainly go to court and establish their reasons.
And then, and if they did, you'd have to come back with new plans. If we close the public hearing, you'd have to file changes to your plans.
Understood.
But I want the citizens to understand.
Okay, is there anybody else in the...
Eric Lintala, 15 Squirrel Island Road, it's L-I-N-T-A-L-A. I wasn't going to say anything more tonight, I think I said everything that I've needed to, but Mr. Churchill brought something to mind when we were talking about the access for the fire department. I was under the impression that the gate's there for the fire department to have access to hidden trails. Now I'm wondering, but he had mentioned too, well, it's also maybe Squirrel Island Road people could benefit from this from the other way, which I, I got a little bit confusing. When we bought our houses on Squirrel Island Road, there was no access through, everybody's happy with the way the road was. But the question now comes to this gate, I think, is, is the fire department requesting that that be a fire gate?
That would be a question for you, Mr. Titlebaum.
I don't, I don't know that they've requested that. I would actually ask John regarding what the fire safety officer, Captain Smith, did he weigh in? I can't remember. Did he weigh in on this at all, the fire gate issue? If you've got to come up, you've got to use the mic. Got to make me move.
Again, no one's requesting the gate. As an engineer and being in town, I think it's just a planning, something that, as a planning, you would want a gate so the Squirrel Island residents could exit through hidden trails. For us, we're not worried about exiting, we don't have a dirt road, we do, we have a paved road. Squirrel Island Road is a, an older road, subject to fallen trees, we talked about it before, what happened in Kermit's it, or, or Swiss Beach, where they had to exit through old abandoned cranberry bogs to, to get out of there due to a gas leak. So what happens if there's a gas leak on Squirrel Island Road at the end? Ms. Malalek?
You don't have gas down there, John, that doesn't...
Yeah, they have propane, or whatever, whatever they have. All right, so say there's a, if there's something, so, you know what, we'll put boulders up. I'm perfectly fine with that. So if that's what the board wants, we'll put boulders right across that, because we're not looking for that access. I was trying to, as a planner, we were trying to make sure that you had the ability for Squirrel Island Road and hidden trails to be connected via a gate where someone controls for the in case of emergency. We don't need it. I was looking out for planning. And if the planning department doesn't want a gate, then when you approve the project, just condition that there shall be no gate and throw boulders across the access, and no access shall be from Squirrel Island Road when the road is constructed. So that's up to the planning board to decide, and, and you've heard the public input, one person wants it, one person doesn't. So quite frankly, we don't care either way. It's up to this board and your, however you guys want to condition the project. You can eliminate the fire gate and tell us no access, that was the original, when the original approval, and that's what the letter came out on Monday, if you, if you read the letter from Mr. Malalek, he was asserting the fact that he actually can travel down that road. So basically, we was, we, that's where the conversation came up, that if you want to go down the road, then you can, you don't have the right. However, we're putting a fire gate for the purpose of the interaction between the two roads. So, and, and we're not, hidden trails is, is no interest. When you approved the project back in 2010, 2012, one of the conditions was of the approval, was that the subdivision shall not be accessed through Squirrel Island Road. And that was Mr. Perry. And then in that, in that, in that decision that was made, it was Mr. Perry and the grantor, which was basically the same applicant, the same property owner, just basically took that condition on, and then they made it sure that people could not access through Squirrel Island Road. So that was part of the approval. If, if this planning board wants that same condition, that's perfectly fine with us. Me personally, if I lived at the end of Squirrel Island Road, I'd want the ability to go through a gate if I needed to, to go and not gated. So, again, I don't know which way you want to go with this, however, I mean, we're, we're talking about private rights and, and how the planning board wants to go. We meet all the requirements, we meet, without this gate, with the gate blocking that road off, we meet all the requirements. So, at this point, we, we just request, close the public hearing, approve it, deny the project, we're going to move on. If you approve it, it's going to get appealed, let the courts decide. If you deny it, it's going to get appealed, it's going to be a simpler project, it's going to be simple because we meet all the boxes, we check all the boxes. I mean, this is, this is, we just keep on going on and on. It's 8:10, is that enough? So, Mr. Lattaliah?
I don't, I don't mean to pull up the project if it's going to go through or anything, but I'm just, I mean, all of a sudden, I, I was fine with the gate as you had presented it, but now we find it's not a requirement by the fire department. I think if there was a vote taken by the people on Squirrel Island, they'd rather just leave it locked up, you know, not to have access through there. That's why we bought all our houses, it didn't, didn't matter that there wasn't a through road to, to County Road. Just, if it makes it easy, just make it disappear. The issues of Hardjus Way, who owns whatever on Squirrel Island Road, just put the block, put the stones there, and just let it go then. I can guarantee the people on Squirrel Island Road don't give a damn about whether there's a gate there or not, and no one's going to expect, you know, to have any kind of emergency vehicles. I don't think they'll have an opinion about that if the gate is there, oh, let's have the gate, that's going to help us. I don't think that's going to come into question with those folks, so just let the gate disappear, make it easy then.
Okay.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you. We're, I think we're pretty much done talking about the gate.
Okay.
I, I don't have my glasses, so I'm going to assume that's a hand going with...
Nancy McHale.
Nancy McHale, okay. Nancy, you're looking beautiful tonight.
Nancy McHale, 87 Farring Hill Road.
Could you spell your last name, please?
McHale, M-C-H-A-L-E.
Thank you.
Thanks. I was, I have nothing to say about the project other than, please don't put boulders blocking off a potential emergency access. In the name of my father, who was on a planning board, and a fire captain, fire chief at the local area, do not block off emergency access for either Squirrel Island or Hidden Trails people. Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody else, right? Nobody on Zoom? We're like, we're clear? Mike, I hear you. But I don't think there's anything, my, my personal opinion is I don't think there's any more, anymore to be gained by dragging this on. You know, there, there's two attorney letters that show and, and discuss to the point of access and rights of passage and all that, so I, I don't really think there's anything else to be gained. And if this third attorney, for some reason, comes up with a miraculous document that says that people can walk through that property and gain access, then that's, at that point, that's their problem to, to deal with. So if, if everybody is okay, I'd like to take a vote to close the public hearing. I, I don't see any benefit in this going on.
Mr. Chair, if I may, there was one comment via the chat system, if you want to hear it. I'll read it to you.
You're killing me, Smalls.
Okay, so Jim Muniz says, I'm having trouble with my audio, I would like to know if the calculations for slopes greater than 15% was backed out of the calculations for buildable area. And he states that he asked this question at the last hearing.
Yes, to Muniz.
Yeah, so the, the regulations state that the max unit count that can be constructed is based upon what could be constructed based on a by right subdivision. So we prepared a by right subdivision showing acre and a half lots, appropriate shape factor, frontage, area, everything, and that's how we came up with the 56 units, as it states in, in the regs. And then, that's how we just kind of moved them around and put them into smaller lots to, to allow for the open space.
Could you, though, you didn't really answer, I don't understand the question about the 15%.
There is a, two options to determine unit count. One is to take the property as a whole and not do a full development plan. Just come in, subtract this, subtract that, and divide by your... Just come in, subtract this, subtract that, and divide by your, I guess, 60,000 square feet. The other option is, says, what you could fit by right on the subdivision.
Which is the approach you took, which we went through at length in October.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, through you to Mr. Cudero, can you comment? Do you have a comment?
My only comment is that what Mr. Bertolo just relayed to you is correct.
So his calculation, which we reviewed in October, met the requirement of the bylaw. And the question of the other approach was another approach, but not the approach that was taken by the applicant.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for the answer. Any more chats?
Okay.
I'm going to restate my, my position. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing if anybody is of their mind to do so. If not, then we'll keep it open.
Mike, what do you think? Last thoughts?
I'm not ready to close. I think we need another opinion from counsel, from our counsel. We want a non-biased opinion, at least I do. I still say people have rights across their roads. I don't agree with what you're seeing, Ms. Clark. Same thing, you know?
But wouldn't they, not to argue with you because I don't want to do that, but wouldn't they be proceeding at their own risk if in fact what you're asserting is accurate? I mean, they've got, they've got everybody in town looking at this project with a magnifying glass. If there's something there that would expose right of ways, someone's going to find it. And then they're the ones that are going to be hung out to dry because now they've got a project they can't build, or they can't build the way it's been submitted. They're going to have to come back.
It actually can be maintained, just no gate at the end. And just stay, we left it open at the back of the cul-de-sac, ties right into the existing path. Those people have rights on Squirrel Island Road, although we don't, I mean, from Squirrel Island Road, although we don't see any documentation, they'll just continue and they'll have brand new paved road to drive on instead of Squirrel Island Road.
I was just going to say, does that...
If they have a right, we can't stop them.
Well, okay, so let's play devil's advocate. So say we go forward, we close the public hearing, the vote goes either way. So let's, for argument's sake, let's say it gets approved and you put the gate up, which I think the gate's a good idea, honestly, but nobody gets keys except the fire department. You know, giving people keys, I don't think makes sense at all. This latest attorney comes out of the woodwork and he waves this magic piece of paper and says, na, 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 na. Your, your solution to that would be, at that point, would be dispose of the gate and allow them to continue to pass and repass on that path.
Them being those with deeded rights, not everybody on Squirrel Road. Yes.
Well, you're not going to be able to put a policeman on that road, so it'll be everybody on Squirrel Island Road or Hidden Trails going in the other one. And I think that would be my bigger concern is, you know, 56 new units, people leaving for work at 8 o'clock or 7:30 in the morning, they, they might be a little bit of congestion getting out of the road onto County, and they may decide, hm, the hell with that, I'm going to go up Squirrel Island and avoid all that crap.
We're following the roads.
Right. So, but, but that would be, that again would be their, their drama.
To your point.
Mr. Chairman, you know, we heard from Mr. Lintala, who clearly doesn't want half of the 56 cars that are going to leave between, say, 7:30 and 9 o'clock, you know, to go to work. He doesn't want them going up Squirrel Island. He suggested that he bought here because, you know, there wasn't a lot out there, there wasn't much traffic, that he enjoyed sort of the pastoral life you can have out there.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So I think our project was designed to be respectful of that.
Okay, well, anything else, sir?
My thoughts is I'd like to close it, but it's hard not to respect another member's concerns. If, if, could you satisfy yourself in two weeks?
Well, if we get, if we get an opinion from our counsel, like I said...
It's just hard to vote.
This other counsel, they come up, over, wait a minute, hold it. The other counsel showed up, like Mike said, overnight. I think I've been asking this question since day one about who has right of ways in there, ancient ways, and this and that. It was never answered.
Well, let me ask you...
They say they've answered it.
Yeah. John, I know you're getting wound up, just take, I think my, my concern with that, Mike, is that Rich isn't a land court lawyer. What's he going to be able to do for us in two weeks? He's, he's going to reach out to some other lawyer. They're going to have to do research. This last letter from this last attorney, as far as my opinion, and only my opinion, is it's a hail Mary.
To your point, Mr. ...
It doesn't have any, it doesn't have any detail in it. It's just assertions. And it was, again, we've been at this for how many months now? Eight months?
Yeah.
And he showed up out of, out of nowhere at the 11th hour with a letter that has absolutely zero substance to it, other than my client states that he has rights to pass. No, nothing to document it or back it up, just a statement. And that's the part I have a problem with. So to hold it open longer, to me, makes no sense. And again, if they haven't done their due diligence and they didn't do a good job of researching the land court, and it does come out of the woodwork that someone has rights, they got a problem. Now, now they have to make, make adjustments or make nice with the people that have the rights. I'm not trying to change your opinion, I'm just, you know, I'm just, I don't see, I personally don't see the benefit. Now, I can ask for the motion, and the motion may not go anywhere. It may die, and we don't close the public hearing. You know, the other thing we've got to...
I want to close the public hearing.
You know, the other thing we've got to remember again, you're going to be shot another vote come 20 days. I'm not going to be here to weigh in one way or another.
Just to your point, Mr. Chairman, we did, Mr. Buckland requested that we give an extension to wrap this up, and we did send in an extension letter, I think until the 20th of this month. So it's looking like obviously we'll need to do one, you know, through the end of your term anyway, just to, because you're not going to, you're not going to close the hearing and vote tonight, I don't think, because you've got a whole fairly involved process of looking at a decision document and trying to come up with a draft decision that you can vote on. We understand that's going to take time until the 24th as well. So, I mean, we'll be submitting a letter for an extension through the end, through the 30th anyway, which will encapsulate your time on the board. But regarding, I hear his concerns. You know, he's been out there forever. He's seen people using things. He wants to make sure that people who have good access through their deeds continue to have that. But I can tell you, leaving aside my own work on this and what you may think about my thoroughness in terms of looking up deeds, you know, Ms. Clark is a title attorney. She does this for banks, she does this for purchases of large properties, she's got a large law firm. This is what she does for work. And her work in researching title for us runs more than just dealing with allegations of easements and so on and so forth before board hearings. She's got to satisfy lenders because as much as, you know, Mr. Churchill's been a successful man in his life, he's going to need financing for this project. And if she provides a faulty title report to any bank that doesn't account for any easements that might be out there, then guess what? You don't get the money. So we're incentivized to be accurate with this stuff. And that's the only point I would, I would make to you, Mr. Baptiste.
Guys are putting me in a bad position.
No, no, you can, if we put it to a vote and you vote no, I mean, there's no hard feelings. I mean, your position is your position. I get it. And I would, I would never try to sway anybody. That's not why we're here.
I'm not going to make the motion.
I move that we close the public hearing on 1523 Hidden Trails Off County Road, special permit for cluster development and SPR.
Do we have a second? I can make the second if you want. I'll just give it somebody else the opportunity.
All eyes are on someone.
All right.
This is where we were last week. It was a 2-2...
I'll, I'll take one for the team. So I second the motion.
Okay, now we have to vote.
Okay.
So you're still going to have to make a decision, Jane. I'm with you.
One way or another. So we have a motion by Sam, by Carl Schultz, seconded by Mike King, all in favor of closing the public hearing. Mike Baptiste.
No.
Jane?
With all due respect, yes.
Sam?
I can't vote against another member of the board. If he didn't object, I'd close it, but I have to say no.
Carl?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I apologize, Mike.
Thank you.
Hey.
We'll still be friends. I'll still let you in the garage.
We still haven't voted to approve or deny.
We haven't voted to either approve or deny.
All we've done is...
Right. We've closed the public hearing.
Okay, and we don't have to vote tonight?
We don't have to vote tonight. That's what I was just going to say.
I mean, we've deliberated, I don't know there's any more deliberation that we need tonight.
I think if we, if we put off a vote till the 24th, I think all we're doing, I, in my mind, I think everybody's made up their mind. It's just going to be a matter of the next two weeks just doing soul searching as to the quality of the project and whether or not it should exist.
Okay. Now, Josh and I worked on a draft, we got a draft order of, a draft conditions of approval. We also got a draft denial. I don't know if every...
Yeah, whichever way it goes. I think we do have both.
If people have read those. Did you get a copy of the revised? Josh didn't, I made a whole bunch of additional conditions.
No, I understood that you two were working on it, but I don't know that I received it.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have Hidden Trails.
Yeah, he did, he did send both of them, yeah. There were like three, there's three documents, I think, because we have, we have to approve the site plan review, special permit, we have to approve the subdivision, and we have to, there's a form for the cluster development.
Right. Notice of residential cluster development, draft plan for decision.
So we don't have to vote tonight if folks haven't had a chance to read those and think through the conditions of approval or denial? Like, I don't know if you saw those, because they came out by email, so I don't know.
I haven't read through...
Look, remind tonight, I didn't see it before I came in.
Yeah, it came out like 10 minutes before we opened the hearing.
Yeah.
So nobody's read them. So, John, we got you halfway there. We got the public hearing closed. Can you, can you hang on till the next meeting so that we can read the documents and make sure we're, we're comfortable with them and then put it to a vote?
Absolutely. I mean, obviously, what the condition means, the project or whatever, is they feel fit. And one of the conditions are that anybody with easement rights should have easement rights.
All right. So...
And if the board so wishes, I can get that language to Carl and Josh so that they can incorporate it into their process. It's up to the board how they, how much they want our participation in there. We submitted a draft and, you know, obviously, you folks are going to take that draft and run with it. But if it would be easier for me to craft the language to go in there to protect any potential easement rights...
All anyone's allowed to do there in this town is make peace.
All right, so do we need a vote to put off a vote?
Transfer development rights, John?
Okay, I didn't think so.
Remember, transfer development rights?
Yeah.
They wrote it. We didn't.
There's nothing to continue.
There's no hair...
No, it's just, it's just, we'll, we'll take a vote on the next, so for the record, we'll, we'll take a vote on the 24th.
I do accept that if Mr. Titlebaum wants to draft language about the, draft language about the easement that we could consider, I, that we can send it, send it into the planning office.
Okay. I'll get that right out.
Yeah, we'll see what it says.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we can, one of the things we can condition any approval, assuming there's an approval, is whether we put the gate up or not, or we put boulders up, or we erect a wall like Berlin.
And just, you know, to the extent that...
Or Mexico.
Wishful thinking.
Geez, don't expand the scope of the project, we're big enough. You know, with respect to the easement, you know, the decision's going to get recorded. So to the extent that there's anybody who can come along at a subsequent date and assert easement rights, you know, they can point to this, they can point to whatever document they have proving their easement rights, they can, they could point to the recorded decision and say, here we are.
And that, this...
We're going down the road.
That never goes away, right?
No.
Right, so if we make a mistake, or you made a mistake, those rights, we're not, we're not abrogating those rights in any way.
No.
No, because you're preventing an off-ramp for the people to take to be able to assert their rights.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the board for sitting through what has been a pretty arduous public hearing. I think we've been before you, what is this, the seventh night we've actually been here? Or something like that? I thank you for your patience. You folks, with your input, have actually made it a better project than we envisioned in the first place, so thank you for that.
I do have a question, and this is not related to, this is for Mr. Churchill and Mr. Bertolo. Did we resolve the ownership of the poles on Squirrel Island Road? That was another project you guys brought in. Do you know how that, that's done? Did those poles, that's all been resolved?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's...
It's not related to this.
It's in ever-source hands right now, so...
Okay, but that's all, that was another project, not related to this?
Yeah.
I just wondered if it had been resolved, yeah.
Thanks again, folks.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, next stop, 24-23 Town of Wareham, special permit for site plan review, WWPC at 6 Tony's Lane.
Mark Drainville with GHD. This is Patrick Boggs with GHD. We were, before the board, I think...
May 20th.
Two or three weeks ago, there were two items remaining on our, that had to be responded to, and in the interim period, we did respond, and I think, I believe the items are resolved.
Okay. You, you've submitted new documents. Could you read the new documents into the record, please? Or...
Sorry.
You submitted a new stormwater...
We can still play together.
So, Mike, we should just read this.
Yep.
All right, we have a new site plan review set of documents. I don't know. What's, what's the date and the identifier on these documents?
It's in the file. May 20, it's, it doesn't have a date, it has May 2024.
We have to, if we were to approve this, we have to definitively identify the plan set. So is this got a definitive...
Do you want to have a look at it?
Oh, here it is in the left-hand corner, Carl. Bottom left corner.
And signed May 29th by Mr. Drainville. That's, this is the official plan set that we're either going to approve or deny. And Mr. Cudero, this is the plan set that you reviewed and issued your opinion on, is that correct?
Yes, May 29th.
So for the record, we're looking at a plan set stamped and signed May 29th. Identified site plan review, June 24, June 2024 on the cover. I just want to make sure that if we were to approve this, we're all talking about the same plan set.
Okay. So there were two items from, sorry, from a couple of weeks ago. One of them was a, a counting of trees and tree sizes, and the other one was a confirmation of the stormwater plan, the stormwater drainage.
Did we get a new stormwater plan? So we, we need to find the stormwater plan and reference that. So we have Wareham Water, Wareham WPCF Improvements Phase 2 Stormwater Report dated May 29, 2024. This is the plan of record that we're reading into the, and it is a, anybody who wants to... Kathy, you wanna read? Okay. I did, I did look through this, but...
You actually did?
Big time.
Okay, so we have, we have, we have new documentation. This is the final plan set.
Phil, if you could weigh in, because even if we could read it, none of us understand any of it.
Thank, it is a riveting document. You are correct. The date's May 29th. We had gone back and forth since our last hearing with the applicant. There were a couple of outstanding matters that we just weren't reaching resolution on relative to drainage. We exchanged correspondence via email. I believe that's in the record, so if the board wanted to see sort of the, how, how the sausage was made, so to speak. The documents, we reached conclusion via email based on what they were submitting. They submitted these May 29 documents for official record now, which memorialize everything we had discussed. As the applicant noted, there were only two items. One was, they failed to meet the checklist submittal requirements, which is identifying trees greater than 18 inches in diameter in the area of the vehicle storage facility. So they have done that. There are 11 trees, to be more particular, that would be removed as part of this project. But then more internal, near and dear to our heart relative to the novel in front of you, the stormwater basin calculations just were not talking with each other. We worked with them. They've revised the stormwater model. They are correct now in our opinion. They meet the town bylaws, and they meet the stormwater standards. All stormwater is properly handled on-site, so we have no further recommendations for the board in terms of outstanding issues.
Outstanding.
Ken or Josh for any comments?
Yeah, I would think, Josh, can you, you have anything to weigh in on?
No, I have no additional comments.
Needs, needs, diet.
Is Ken still out there or not?
I believe Ken is still.
Ken, did you, did you review this, and do you have any comments or concerns?
No concerns, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Being a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience or online that wishes to weigh in? Any other comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing on... 2423 Town of Wareham Special Permit for Site Plan Review, WWPC at 6 Tony's Lane.
Second.
We have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett, all in favor. Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Having the public hearing properly closed, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Josh and I worked on a decision document, but I don't think Ken sent it out.
I think we have it. We didn't get to... Let's see here.
I don't think there were any conditions, Josh, that you and I came up with. Concom had no concerns.
Correct. I think it'd be your standard, the standard you, conditions you tie to every other project.
Right, just, just, your standard conditions.
There's no road construction. It's not a subdivision, so, other than just that we were gonna try and add the inspections, a list of inspections, so...
Right.
We're trying to come up with a standard set of inspections that we would do for, I mean, subdivision, we have a whole list of inspections, but a standard set of inspections for projects. So I move that we, we can move to a vote if you're ready, subject to the standard conditions of approval, with additional language that says the land use coordinator, planning director, and the applicant, and Mr. Cudaro will agree on a set of standard inspections.
Do they have a 51G account?
Fifty-three, yeah.
Fifty-three?
Yeah, it exists.
Okay.
Yep.
No, I know they were in tough shape financially, so...
So that, that would be my motion. Subject to the standard conditions of approval, with the addition of the agreement that a list of inspections satisfactory to the land use coordinator, planning director, our town designated engineer, and, and the applicant are itemized in that condition.
Do we have a second? We have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett, all in favor to approve. Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
I wanna be able to flush my...
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody here should be upset about this. The paper.
Hey, Mike, can you call the police department and get some security out of here? I don't think I'm gonna get out of the building. It's still out in the hallway.
I'll protect you, Mike.
Okay.
Okay, next stop. 15-23 370 County Road LLC Site Plan Review and Special Permit. Is there anybody here to speak to this? Okay, you are welcome to speak. Identify yourself, please.
Hi, Attorney Julian Morton here for the applicant, 370 County Road, Morton's M-O-R-T-O-N. And I do have the principal here, also Mr. Chrisler.
I have any paperwork on this project? We have nothing.
Well, I didn't, I don't know that there's been any, well, you can let her speak.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I can give an update. So we submitted on 5/28 full plan sets to the planning office with revisions pursuant to speaking to the fire department. So, and we actually have now a letter from Captain Smith saying that he's, he's okay with the project, and he's satisfied. I think where we're at right now is that we've submitted everything. Again, that was on the 28th, so we're looking at, to see if Mr. Cudaro has any other additional comments. On the last peer review I saw, I just saw that it was just the fire, but perhaps he can speak to that. Do you not have the plans there?
We do not. Phil, if you could, if you could speak to it?
I didn't see one in the email either.
So Attorney Morton is correct. At the last meeting, we had closed out the technical matters on the peer review, but I'm not aware of any new plans, so I've not reviewed new plans dated, I guess, May 28.
So you, you see these, Jane? I'm looking at my email. I'm not seeing them.
And there's nothing uploaded to the website?
I was looking at a 6-4 set on the website.
On the website?
Yep.
For 370 County Road?
Reposo is here, but I do have an email on May 30th that was forwarded to members of the board with our submission, so I'm not sure.
12-23. I get 19-23.
What was the date again? I'm looking for my email.
It was May 30th, and it does look like it, it's to the members, to all of you.
Oh, I, actually, I do see that, but I...
There's two, there's two projects.
12-23 it should be.
Yeah, but if you're looking in the current...
Okay, there's no...
Oh, I know why, because they did the A and R in the front.
Yeah. I apologize. I see, I see that we did get a link to the, we didn't get copies. That's, okay.
Okay, I apologize for that. It looks like, though, that the, the materials were dropped off on 5/29. But we're happy, obviously, we want you to be able to review that, and we're happy to continue to allow time for that.
Well, I don't know if Mr. Cudaro has got comments. Have you, you haven't reviewed it yet either.
I, I have not. I wasn't aware there were new plans.
Okay. I think we ran into this once before. You know, it's great that the paperwork gets uploaded to the, to the site, but there's gotta be some kind of a notification to the board and parties involved that the stuff is there.
Well, we, we got an email from Sonia, but, but Phil, I don't know that Phil got that email.
I, I have no recollection of getting it, and I apologize to Attorney Morton if I was copied on it.
You, you were copied on the email from Sonia.
Okay.
It's okay. We know we have a lot of projects, so...
May 30th?
May 30th, yes.
Because the last email I have on that project is from May 13th.
You are copied on this as well.
How are these emails going?
Okay, all right. So while we, while we deliberate, I do have a question for Attorney Morgan. At the last time you were before us, you and the other, the engineer, whose name escapes me at the moment, we were talking about ancient ways, and you made a representation that there was case law that you could cite regarding that matter, and you were supposed to send me the citation, and I haven't seen that citation.
If you recall, we said we were gonna put it as part of our submission, and I did do a narrative that was submitted with our, as an appendancy. So there, the letter is in there, Mr. Schultz, so I apologize for not sending it directly, but...
Okay, so it's in this package somewhere?
Yes. So you'll see there's a letter, and it's on the website as well. Appendices, O, P, and Q have been added, and my letter is in there as well, and I do have case law in there.
Which document should I look at?
If you click on the link, and you go to the narrative, 5/28.
5/28 narrative, okay. I can look for it in there. Okay, so I was, I was waiting for a separate, I will look in there, thank you. As long as it's in there, I'll find it.
Okay, absolutely.
Yeah, you're not supposed to make me have to work hard to find these things, but...
I can email it separately if it behooves the board.
I'll, if it's in there, I'll find it. Thank you.
Okay.
267 pages.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, enjoy the read. Do we know what page it's, it's on?
I'm looking right now.
Ancient ways. Oh, there it is, right there. Ancient ways. Oh, that was lucky. Page 28.
I'll, I'll index it and scan it, or, it's already PDF, but I'll scan it so it's searchable.
You said page 28?
Page 28. So Mike, there's some more information for you about language and about ancient ways.
I'll definitely look at it when I go home.
It's actually at the end of the very document is where, where my letter is.
At the end of which document?
The very last two pages of the, of the actual narrative. So it should be easy, and you can grab it, and I have put the sites in there.
The different document?
See, the very end.
Fortunately, it's coming up very small. All right, I'll, I'll look through the 297 pages for the...
The last two pages is where it is.
Of the whole document?
Yes. It's the last appendancy. But I'm sending out my computer right now, and I will email it on this chain, so everyone has it as well, so...
Okay, it's, it's on your letterhead. That's the document you're talking about?
That's correct.
I see, I see the, I can't read it. It's too small, but I'll, I'll be able to find it when I get home. Thank you.
Sure.
That was my only question. I was waiting for that. I was excited.
Oh, I'm, it's there, but, yeah, so Mr. Chairman, would you, we could continue this? To allow for review and...
Especially where Phil hasn't had a chance to review it yet. I mean, that's, I think, the opinion we respect most, so I would like to continue it until it can be reviewed.
But this is the 24th. It's getting crowded.
24th is gonna be like...
Your, your party.
11, 11 o'clock, it'll be just like good old days when George was chairman. We were here till 11:30 every other Monday. No, he didn't.
He didn't?
No, no. It was like watching paint dry.
It's still a public hearing, so we have to...
I understand. So is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this project, either present or on Zoom?
I would. It's Eric Chrisler. My, my last name is spelled C-R-I-S-L-E-R. I'm the project sponsor. Thank you to all of you for, for working so hard and so late. It's, it's amazing work, and I really appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure, there are a couple things that I wanted to say. The first is that I wanted to make sure that the process of getting the, the information over to Mr. Cudaro is, is, is fully in place, and, and I think that, that he can review the, the work that, that, that we did on the fire road, or expanding the road, and I think that was the material thing that, that changed in the, in the plan set. We, of course, addressed many items that were brought up along the way. Secondly, we're not in as admirable a position, or maybe we are, actually, but for us, the SIP order is very important, the one that was brought up earlier, in the earlier solar project that was looking for a extension, and, but for us, a site plan approval is very important to have before all of those, those things come into, the SIP and the ever-source work comes into place. So anything we can do to, you know, work to make sure that these documents are in front of you more quickly, if there are any suggestions about that, I would, I would greatly appreciate it. And again, thank you so much for all this hard work that you're doing.
Thank you, sir. Nobody present, nobody on Zoom. I would entertain a motion to continue.
I want to read two documents into the record.
And I also wanna request that Mr. Cudaro thinks that he can have an opinion in two weeks.
Oh, in two weeks, yeah. Okay, you first.
So the two documents I wanna read into the record, this is gonna become my standard. I wanna read in the saving 1,365 acres of forest from an Audubon publication, as well as executive order signed in 2021, commonly known as 30 x 30.
So noted. Thank you. Mr. Cudaro, do you feel that you can have these reviewed and comments ready for the 24th?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and I, I apologize. We were copied on the email. I appear to have missed it.
I can't, I can't find it either, so...
So to Mr. Chrisler's point, the system is in place. We overlooked it, so we'll get it done very, very quickly.
Just a question, Mr. Chairman, through the chair to Ms. Gleason. Is that just the executive order from President Biden that, that you're adding in to the record?
Yes, it's about conservation of at least 30% of U.S. land, freshwater and ocean by the year 2030.
So it's the actual law that I'm familiar with, 30 by 30, which, but it's the, the law?
It's an executive order.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I will put them up on the site. This just came across my desk, and I've just put my hands on the, the text for 30 by 30, so I will put that up.
Thank you very much. I know I'm familiar with that law, that it also includes farms, including in that 30. So that's a part of a section for everyone to take a look at, as this involves part of preserving a farm.
Okay.
So I move that we continue 12-23 370 County Road LLC Site Plan Review Special Permit till June 24th.
Second.
We have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett, all in favor. Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you very much.
I, I, everybody missed it. I don't know how it got through. Discussion possible, vote to appoint a member of the planning board to the Community Preservation Committee. Do we have a, do we have a volunteer?
Yes, I move that we renominate Mr. Corbett as our representative to the Community Planning.
Oh, I.
Preservation.
Community Preservation Committee.
Okay, we have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Mike Baptiste, all in favor. Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Stay.
Carl?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Next up, discussion impossible, vote to appoint a representative to the Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District.
I nominate Julie Moran-Citizen as the planning board representative to the Southeastern Region Planning and Economic Development District.
Second.
We have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett, all in favor. Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right, Sam, you're up.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Before we do that, I just have a question, have we made any progress on the issue of an associate member?
Associate, we need a full-time member.
We have.
Right.
Right now, we don't need a full-time, but we will.
But we're going to need one.
Yeah.
We have the, the, the select office asserts that there is no provisions in our charter for an associate member.
And we have provided.
We have provided mass law that states that there is.
No, but we've also provided references in the charter.
Within ours, yes. That's pretty much where it is.
Okay, so.
We've presented, it was rebuked, and as it stands right now, it's not being, it's not being adopted.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you to the Select Board Liaison, Ms. Quirk, has the Select Board taken this up as a body?
Not as far as I'm aware.
I'll come to the microphone, please, Ms. Quirk.
My name is Sherry Quirk, I'm on the Select Board, and may I just say that these seats are way more comfortable than those of.
So, so that, it has not been taken up?
It has not been taken up. I expect to have a conversation this week on that subject.
On that subject, okay.
Yes, I do.
Yeah, because both Carl and I did our research, found the documentation showing that it is in fact a provision within not only mass state law, but our bylaws.
And the, and the charter.
And, and it, like, it was basically dead on arrival, I guess, for lack of a better way of putting it.
We'll have a further conversation about this, and I will keep you informed of what the conversation.
Okay.
Can, can I request that it's done in a public forum?
I, my suggestion would be that, that I go forward.
Okay.
And, but I'll keep you informed, I think it will be more productive that way.
Okay.
But at some point, I think it would be good to have a public discussion of it.
Right, so I do further recommend that regardless of Mr. King stepping down and refilling his, his position with a full-time member, that we don't drop the issue of associate member just because that urgency has been addressed.
I hear you.
Mm-hmm. I, I would have to agree.
Again, a non-debatable motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste, all in favor. Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you so much. That's not bad.